I know the percent of families above the poverty line. We're using the poverty line and not some percentage of the poverty line. It's not uncommon to use 200% of poverty because of the nature of the economy in our area. So I'm just, if I'm correct, the poverty line is like 23,000 and some for a family of four. So I'm asking, did we consciously choose poverty line versus 200% of poverty line like some other studies use?
Do you guys want to take that?
Hi, I'm Chris Gans. So what we did there was we took poverty because it's kind of a gold standard indicator across cities that folks use. And we addressed what you're looking at by including the cost of living indicator separately to really show that, you know, say poverty may be such in different zones across Santa Rosa, but cost of living, as we've also found in the report, is a problem throughout zones and wanted to highlight that as well.
Thank you. I actually expected the cost of living, because we're using what I would call average as the kind of yellowish color, that would imply that cost of living is average in one, five, six, and eight. And because our cost of living is so high compared to other places, I think you're not really catching it in cost of living.
Right, that's a good comment. And we've actually heard that comment in our post-draft reviews, and that is something we're going to put more to the fore, the fact that cost of living in Santa Rosa, while there may be some differences across zones here, overall, it's much higher than other places.
Right, which is why you might use the 200 times poverty. But whatever you decide, it would be helpful if we could be clear about whether average is livable or not, because I suspect it is not.
Got it. Thank you.
I'd also like to follow up really quickly. Poverty line, is that national, state, or local?
That is federal in this case.
So it's national?
Yes.
West Virginia, Santa Rosa, one of the same?
Yep.
So that cost of living point is well taken. I do have a, well, my dad was born across the river from West Virginia. Page 22 of the draft, I do have a problem with one of the sentences. How does cost of living relate to violence prevention? And it makes, "High cost of living makes it challenging for low-income families to accumulate wealth and take actions to improve their circumstances such," and here's what I don't like, "as moving out of unsafe neighborhoods, attending a quality school." How about making our neighborhood safe as opposed to leaving them over there and we're getting out?
Yeah, well, note taken. Mm-hmm. Yep, appreciate it. All right, so going to the next slide. So we wanted to just use a quick example of, once again, allowing council in the pub to see how this report is currently structured. So this is one indicator. This is the early childhood education. And so you see that there's two pages that address each indicator. So the first page kind of gives you a description of what is meant for the purpose of this report when we say early childhood education. On some of these indicators, there's different discussions and different understandings. We want to be explicitly clear on how we've defined it for the purpose of this report. And then the second paragraph, why does early childhood education matter? And in this particular case, you'll see the fact of juveniles who participated in preschool education at ages three and four are 70% less likely to get arrested. So trying to give specific information as to how this correlates. And then we identify how it is measured. And for the purpose of this particular indicator, it explains that it's measured looking at licensed childcare. So the research supports quality, "quality" quote-unquote childcare, but yet you have to define quality. So for the purpose of this indicator, the last paragraph explains how we define quality. And the way we define quality is we looked at licensed childcare provider as being that indicator. Now, that's not necessarily the, you know, bottom of the line, the way everyone does it, but for the purpose of this report, that's the standard that we use. And then the second page, and each indicator has two pages, just gives you the data and kind of how it's broken down by the nine zones. So if you look at this one, for example, Zone 2 and Zone 6 kind of pop out there, obviously doing pretty good when it comes to seats for early, for quality childcare seats. Matter of fact, I think it was Zone 2 that had six times higher amount of licensed childcare seats than, for example, Zone 7, who you see falls significantly below the city standard or the city average. So this is just showing an example. And Zone 2 is comprised of junior college-
Excuse me, so this is another place where we're looking at per 1,000 people and including Oakmont, where there won't be any children at all. The presence or absence of seats for people who don't have any need of them really slants the data again. So I'll make the point one more time here. And it's easy, when you're looking at these numbers, not to be remembering that. So again, I think if we could just have a separate zone, that would be really helpful.
All right, thank you. And then one of the things that-
Excuse me, Cleed, this is per 1,000 children, is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Better answer, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's how most of the, and Chris, you can correct me on this, most of the indicators are broken down per 1,000 by population. Yeah.
Just to follow up, the per 1,000 children, I think Zone 2 might have a lot because of access to jobs downtown. So I don't know if that necessarily means the residents have more childcare. I mean, there's, I don't know how, you can pick it apart all kinds of ways, but that just pops out at me, that access to jobs doesn't necessarily mean residents. So just a thought, if you might, if it's material, you know the data better than I.
So one of the lens that we also looked at, for at least for this indicator, was a citywide. How are we doing citywide? So this is included in that second page. Overall access to quality early childhood education is low citywide. Only enough, there's only enough seats to serve 15.9% of children, zero to five, throughout the city of Santa Rosa. So you can try to give the breakdown per zone, but also try to look at citywide implications when we can. So that's just an example. I just want to take a moment to drill down on at least one example to show you how each indicator is analyzed in this report.
Can I ask an overview question 30,000 feet on that point, you know, because we're looking for solutions as well? Health and education, that's basically their school districts, county, that's not our responsibility as a city. How do we help that?
Well, yeah, so I think our approach or philosophy and our strategic plan is that we all have a role to play, right? The county services, the schools, parents, city, law enforcement. And it really takes a coordinated effort, but someone has to be the backbone agency and someone has to be the lead. So historically, the city of Santa Rosa, the Mayor's Game Bridge Task Force, now the Santa Rosa Violence Prevention Partnership, has been the lead in bringing, convening all those other stakeholders and agencies to the table. And I think one of the missing links, at least from my perspective in this position for the last couple of years, is a shared accountability tool. And that's what we're hoping to create with this, with this report. Sure.
If I can add as well, Serena Lee, no program analyst with the partnership, one of the other things we're looking at is a new strategic plan coming up this summer that Cleed mentioned when he was discussing the goals of the scorecard. And so we were hoping that all of the different members that are on the policy team and operational team, which includes schools and the county and such, that they will all be contributing towards identifying strategies that can specifically address what the findings are in the scorecard. Similarly, when we made up the goals team, we specifically looked for a cross-sector of not only policy team and operational team members, but from the various perspectives of the different entities that are represented on each of the teams. So we really wanted, as Cleed mentioned, to take more of that comprehensive approach.
And then finally, I think, once we get to an agreement on what the data is and the data that we're going to be using, it becomes a tool for the city to look at opportunities. Are there reasons why, are there hurdles for, for example, childcare facilities that we're creating in, potentially in planning processes, et cetera, and so forth? So it becomes a comprehensive tool, council member, for us to look at areas and make some, potentially bring forward policy suggestions to the council based upon these factors. So, you know, we're going to be paying attention once we get to the final product and say, what is our role in these conversations and are there things we can do, whether those are strategic investments through some of the grant-making that we do, or policy decisions in the process to inform how we might better serve this as a city?
And I thank you all for your answers. I just still, you know, the people writing the checks, the funding, that's not us in this particular area. But since you brought up the policy team, I do have a question because, to me, there are some significant omissions. I don't see any neighborhood leaders, and I really don't see much from the downtown merchants, which is a significantly impacted crime area. And how much turnover do we have on the policy team? Have we, have we had? And are we reaching out to those, to those areas? Because you're talking about taking a village and all joining in. I don't see those two groups at all.
So thanks for your question. Actually, interestingly enough, this past year, we've added a couple new entities to the policy team, including the Downtown Business Chamber, who's our newest member, one of our newest members to the policy team. So we're, you know, one of the, one of the findings, and Serena will go over some of the key findings in a little bit, but one of the key findings is that we're realizing that downtown requires some attention and some kind of unique approaches and strategies since it is the hub of many activities throughout the work week and throughout the weekend. So we did reach out to the Santa Rosa Chambers, and they are the new members to the policy team. Historically, I think you're right, it hasn't changed a whole lot, but we're continuously trying to identify some of those folks who should be part of that team. And I was going to say that, to your previous question, what we hope to do with this tool is we hope that entities like the county, who do have the resources to direct early childhood education specifically, will use this tool to guide some of their decisions, just as we're going to use it to guide some of our decisions. We're hoping this will be a useful tool to our other partners who come to our meetings every other month and have been involved in this process. And we're hoping that by drilling down on some of these specifics, it can be a tool for them to use also in their policy decision, in their policymaking process. So just wanted to add that tidbit. So this page is included in the report. It's basically a summary sheet, and you notice there's a nice little color scheme there. And it kind of serves as that kind of, if you want to go to one page and kind of get the gist or the upshot of some of the tellings or findings in the scorecard, this will be the sheet to go to. And I won't go over it, but I will say that one of the lessons learned from the previous cities who engaged in this project, and one of the lessons we were able to capitalize on, if you will, is to not use the grading system A through F. So previous scorecards have used a grading scheme of A through F. And sometimes it hasn't been digested very well from folks who live in a categorized F neighborhood. So we changed that up for the purpose of the Santa Rosa scorecard and came up with a color scheme. And then we had a lot of dialogue on which colors may be more appropriate. So this is, this is where we landed, and just wanted to make reference to that. So if you didn't want to just go to one page and kind of get the gist of it, this would be the page to go to. And I don't know what page it is in the actual report off the top of my head. 18, page 18?
19.
All right, 19. All right. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Serena to discuss some of the findings.
Okay. So to begin, Cleed has shown you some examples of what the different components of the scorecard looks like, and this is another one. And this is the demographic findings by zone. We're calling it Communities at a Glance. And what this is telling us is we're looking at the age, the race and ethnicity, the educational attainment, and the percentage of Spanish speakers per zone. And then we give some context as to what is the data telling us. So we have one of these for each of the zones that are identified in the scorecard. And what it tells us is something that I believe that is well-known, and it's also consistent with what was found in the Portrait of Sonoma, that there are a lot of adverse neighborhoods within Santa Rosa. And for example, for race and ethnicity, we found that there are 75% white residents and 10.8% Latino Hispanic in Zone 4 as compared to 37.4% white and 50.1% Latino Hispanic in Zone 8. So on opposite ends of the freeway, you're seeing significantly different demographics. Similarly, with age, 29.2% juveniles and 5.7% seniors in Zone 7, which is in the southwest area, as compared to 16.9% juveniles and 26.8% seniors in Zone 6, which I think really speaks to Councilmember Combs' point about the differences when you include Oakmont in there. And then again, with the high school diploma and speaking to the educational attainment, there's 95% in Zone 6 compared to 68.5% in Zone 5. So it really underscores the point that we need to be addressing education. Some of the findings that we came up with when we were looking at all of the data was that there were specific areas that had higher densities of youth-involved crime, which is something that we're specifically looking to address as part of the partnership. And so what we did was we created what we were calling high-need areas. So as Cleed mentioned in the opening, we want to, one of the reasons, the scorecard is going to be a tool for us to objectively define the high-need areas in Santa Rosa. So what we did is we looked at using the youth-involved violent crime as a filter to identify these high-need areas that we should be addressing specifically. And also too, what we discussed is that at times, they are centered around what we're calling areas of high public interest. So this is a bit of repeating of what we previously talked about as part of this presentation. But it really centers around schools and hospitals and law enforcement facilities, which does inflate the percentages. So we put together what's called a density map to really understand where the highest density areas are when it comes to youth-involved crime. And it is, again, consistent with the portrait. And the specific areas that we're looking at are downtown, which is in Zone 9, in the center of town. Then we have Roseland, which is in Zone 7, in the southwest area. We have South Park, which is in the Zone 8, in the southeast quadrant of the city. And we have West 9th, which is on, in Zone 7, on the western side of Santa Rosa. And then finally, West Steel Lane, which is in the northwest quadrant and dances on the line of Zone 1 and Zone 3. One of the things that we've identified through this analysis is that there's actually a sixth high-need area, which we are identifying as Corby-Hearn. And so we are going to be going back and looking at the data and doing a specific analysis of this particular area because we feel that it's really important for us to be including it as part of this baseline year and that it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't.
Let me thank you for that, but take you back to the map. I'm very glad that you're looking at the Corby-Hearn area. I have a concern, though, about South Park. And I know that funding for some entities like Community Action Partners theoretically stops, covers the South Park area and theoretically stops at Aston. But both Kewana Elementary and Taylor Mountain Elementary School have, I think on the scorecard, 90, over 95% English learners, free school lunch, foster kids. I think Taylor Mountain is 94.7, but that's close to 95%. And they're below the South Park line of demarcation, which is Aston Avenue. Is it, and looking at, at the blob, I can't really tell, but it looks to me as if Aston Avenue cuts the blob and that we're not serving just south of it. So is there a way that we can expand services in the South Park area a little further south?
Absolutely. And so if I, thank you for the question because it allows me to clarify. So when we were identifying these high-need areas, we were not, we were trying to not identify a specific neighborhood, but look at the general geographic region that it overlaps. And so, so to answer your question, yes, we will include the areas just south of Aston because it certainly is an area as well.
So it isn't the firm definition of South Park, but it's a fuzzy definition of South Park?
Correct, yes.
As long as that's the case, I'm very happy.
Yes.
And thank you again for including the Hearn-Corby area.
Sure. So to go over some of the findings that we found when we looked at the high-need areas, and these are not the only findings that we came up with, we are still going through and doing further analysis, but these are some of the points that we wanted to call out as some examples of what we've found. So first of all, five of the areas have higher rates of Latinos than all other races and ethnicities, with the exception of downtown. So what that begs is, if we are using the filter of youth-involved violent crime and there's higher percentages of Latinos, that correlates to Latinos being exposed to higher incidences of violence. And so we, we need to be looking at that. So it's good information for us to be taking into consideration when we are identifying strategies of how to provide services and what we need to be doing for those particular areas. Also, all areas have higher poverty rates than the city averages, which is something that we have just talked about as well. So we, at first, were looking at comparing zone to zone, and then it was one of those aha moments where, in reality, this is an issue across all zones that we need to be taking a further look at. Downtown Roseland and the West 9th areas have lower employment rates than the city average. And then finally, all areas have lower voter participation rates than the city average, with South Park being the lowest at 17.8%. So that's significantly lower than all of the areas and across the city combined. And then if you would like, in the appendix, there's further analysis by each high-need area, specific to each indicator, so you can go in and look at some further information. And then, as I mentioned, we're going to be doing some further analysis to, to make sure we draw out all of the key things that we need to be focusing on. So as we have been analyzing this information, and there's a lot of it, we started identifying some strategy considerations that we should be mindful of as we are moving forward and are using this as a tool to identify what we need to be doing for the community. So these are six examples of some of the strategy considerations that we have identified. There are many more, but we wanted to call these out and highlight them for the purposes of today's study session. So the first one is increase your unemployment and work readiness programs. So we know that we've seen the rates that are identified around economic conditions and that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And similarly, with the literature with violence prevention efforts, it's important and it's critical for, to provide work readiness opportunities and the employment and the life skills themselves. And so-
Quick question on that. Do you feel that youths that don't have employment really don't feel they have a shot at upward mobility in our society? Is that part of the reason why it's up here? You know, there's no chance for me. I have no job. I have no shot.
That's, I mean, my opinion aside, I think that it's important to pay attention to what the youth's interests are and what their strengths are in reminding them that they do have an opportunity and building those resiliency skills in them to believe in themselves and make positive choices. So that's the importance of having the programs incorporate the youth development approach that we stress with our funding and incorporate as a key strategy with the strategic plan. So that's why we try to, we don't necessarily ask that and call that out, but we try to address that through the way that the programs are designed. Second one is implement specific strategies to address neighborhood integrity in the high-needs areas. And for example, looking at the option of doing a strategic neighborhood action plan. So as we identify these high-need areas, the idea is to understand what's going on in these particular areas so that we can identify strategies to, you know, tip the scale or shift the needle to move in more of a positive direction. So as we move forward, we're going to be analyzing these specific needs and utilizing the policy and operational teams and through some community engagement opportunities to really get an understanding of what's going on in these, in these areas. And as part of that, with the strategic neighborhood action plan model, we've been doing research, and they do this in other cities. And as part of that, you engage the residents, the business community, everyone that has a vested interest in that particular area in order to fully understand what's going on and have a well-rounded approach to when you are identifying strategies. The next one is increase early childhood education programs. So as Cleed mentioned, in order for youth to be at the appropriate literacy rate at the third grade level, then they need to make sure that they have access to early childhood education programs. And so stressing the importance of increasing access to these programs and providing youth with the most opportunities possible for education. And then enhance college and career readiness programs. So as they grow up and are looking to graduate, making sure that they have the appropriate programs in place while they're still in school in the K-12 system, and then prepare them so that they are ready to move forward into college, into career, and make sure that they're going to be successful. And then the next one is incorporate trauma-informed services addressing adverse childhood experiences. So this is a newer area that we are learning a lot more about, and we are, and the adverse childhood experiences, so studies have shown that the more adverse experiences that children are exposed to as they grow older, it dramatically impacts their health conditions. It leads to incidences of violence and being exposed to more incidences of violence. So in order to truly reduce youth violence, which is one of our mission, we need to first understand what the root causes are that are creating the situation in the first place. And so that really speaks to the public health model that Cleed had mentioned that we're moving towards is incorporating this approach. And so this will be incorporated in our new strategic planning process. And then finally, foster opportunities to increase voter equality and participation and community engagement. So in the previous slide, I showed how the voter participation is fairly low in Santa Rosa. So looking for ways to engage the community more in actively voting, being involved in their community, is something that we are going to be looking at stressing as a key strategy as we move forward. And that concludes our presentation, and if you have any more questions, we are happy to answer.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I note that we've broken it down by beats now, the data, especially the gang crime data. I would assume that we would be able to go backward in time relatively easy since the police department, I would assume, keeps gang crime, crime data by beat. Why aren't we presenting that?
Go forward.
Okay. In this case, we're looking at, this is a baseline report, and actually going to add additional years in the future for future trending. I think past trending is definitely an open question. I think it was just not implemented in this report as looking at really a single year as a baseline and then building on the future. Not that that couldn't be done, because as you're saying, law enforcement does have excellent data capabilities to add that.
I, for one, would like to see that, not necessarily as what we're using going for, but where we've been. Because I get asked all the time, you know, it's, 2005 was when money started going for this effort. What do we, what's our metric to look at in terms of whether we've been successful or not? And I would think that if we're going to beats, it would be there. Thank you. And thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
I don't know if you have questions or comments. I don't have questions, but just those comments, Mr. Vice Mayor. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for doing this. I know that this is a national direction. A lot of cities across the country are trying to figure this out and get to this point. I know the Advancement Project has done a lot of work in the community of Watts in LA, and there's been some remarkable changes that have occurred in Watts because of this community effort. And looking at a lot of these underlying factors, community members are able to understand it, they're able to buy into it, they get it when it talks about education, employment, and all the other hosts of underlying factors that impact our kids. And education is a big key, and health issues are also a big key. I met with quite a number of cities with the Defending Children Initiative, the- I met with quite a number of cities with the Defending Children Initiative, the National Forum on Youth Violence Prevention, and a lot of them are struggling to get here because in many cities, they're not having the dialogue. They haven't got there yet. They're still stuck on trying to deal with, a lot of major crises is dealing with youth and gang violence, but they need to get to this point, and I think this is the direction that many cities are heading towards, and I don't think it really matters as far as the size, because you look at LA, very big city, but they're able to break it down by concentrating on troubled areas like Watts, like Boyle Heights, and they're starting to see some progress, and from there, they can expand it, because it's, you know, a city like that, you can't apply the same methods citywide, because it's very unique, different dynamics, different needs as well. And part of that, of course, is that education typically isn't an area that is, that falls under the purviews of a municipal city, but those are, discussion with the policy team is what do we need to do as far as policy changes? And I think when we're looking at that and we recognize that education is a big factor, that health is a big factor, then what can we do to support our schools, to support our healthcare professionals, to influence, to look at other models like the City of Richmond with their Health and All Policies Initiative, and looking at health citywide in every department and how they implement policy and what they do in their continued growth? So this is good, and I hope that we do get to a point where we can measure more of that third-grade reading level, because that is a big key, that is a big factor, so we need to include that as well. And it also falls in line with a lot of legislative direction as it relates to gangs and regionalizing efforts. I hope that we can find a way of continuing. I know there's an interest county-wide to how do we duplicate this county-wide, because it is so valuable, and that does meet the legislative direction, in addition to the partnerships and the strong balance of the prevention, the intervention, the enforcement, and the reentry, which is a big piece, but it all ties into this. So thank you for moving us ahead and, once again, being a leader in making this happen, because it's happening here for us, so thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I do also want to compliment you, Vice Mayor. I know you're recently engaged with the partnership, and once, in this new field, it's a very complicated, not a very linear type of thing, so I do appreciate the efforts that you're putting into this effort. For this Advancement Project, one of the things that I've heard from the communities, like, how do you measure the success, whether it be a dollar amount or other ways? It's always been interesting to me, I've heard from other community members, well, what if we didn't do anything? You know, there's many members of this, you know, the partnership that are in the audience now, what if we weren't doing anything? In other words, is there a clear dollar amount that would equate, you put this much money, you'll have these, this type of results? But when you have a human event like violence, what, how would you measure, okay, what if you didn't have any of those services in Santa Rosa, what would it look like? Do you understand where I'm getting at?
Not quite. Can you possibly provide an example?
So it's the absence of services. So some people may equate, we've put X number of dollars into it, do we get the bang for the buck? And I've heard other conversations in the community go, well, what if you didn't have any of these services here, where would we be? And how do you measure the absence of what we have here?
That's a good question. I think we're doing a little bit of that research for Prop. 47, other research, in terms of different courts or different avenues people have to get resentenced or reclassified. So in those types of measurements, which are not in this, in this report that we're talking about, generally what's, you know, comes up is different terms, you know, here in the business community, like leakage or things like that, where people will go to other places for the services, and then those who can, but those who don't have access to the services and can't get access to them, then that's a different problem. So we try, at least in this report, to talk about capacities of services where we can, and just the lack of capacities, you know, shows up in these kind of, you know, base layers of what causes violence. So I think that I hope gets to your question a little bit, but I think it's a little bit of a deeper methodological question that you might be asking.
Well, it's one of those, just because we have had, this is part of the community conversations, sometimes I've struggled, how do you answer that? Because I know all the things that we're doing, and I really do appreciate these efforts that we're trying to be very much more strategic about getting at those root causes, looking at the Portraits of Sonoma County, the upstream investments, where all this community, it's just not the city of Santa Rosa, this is entire community that's looking at some of those indicator factors. If we address it there, that's more bang for the buck at that root cause than wait until let's build more prisons, more probation. So I really appreciate the efforts the whole team is putting towards this effort. Thank you.
So I'll just add maybe one, two cents before the next question. So I think, the way I'm understanding your question, Councilmember Swedhelm, is kind of the next level of, I think, when some folks are calling like a cost-benefit analysis, which is a more robust, labor-intensive approach, but we're attempting to do that with the Positive Youth Justice Grant that we got from the state that we presented to council a few months back, where we can, we can look at the cost of how much it would have cost if this young person wasn't, didn't receive services through this grant. How much would it have cost to incarcerate this young person who was headed towards juvenile justice system? And the rough estimated cost, and, you know, we don't have the, I'd have all the details to talk about it now, but we will present that to council at some point in time, is about $150,000 a year, approximately, to receive all the services as an incarcerated young person under 18. We're serving that same young person with the Positive Youth Justice Grant, including work readiness and mental health, which tend to be some of the more costly services, for about $7,000 on average per youth. So, you know, there's, there would have to be a control group, there would have to be a lot of different things, a more robust effort to do that, which we don't have the capacity to do, but we're attempting to at least capture some of those mechanisms so that we can report out it as comprehensively as possible with the resources we currently have.
Councilmember Combs?
Thank you. I think you read the question that I had here as you just answered. So I do want to say it's an impressive-looking program, and I'm one of the people who's concerned about whether we're getting the most bang for our buck, whether it's a cost-effective program. I certainly don't want to have no program, I just want to make sure that we have an effective And of course, one way to do that is to make comparisons with comparable cities that have chosen to do something different with their resources. And another way is, as you mentioned, a control group, which is kind of an odd phrase, but we could look at folks with similar demographics who are, for example, in our parks programs, and see whether it makes sense to pay folks to be just mainstream into our parks programs with additional funding versus in specialized programs. Obviously, some of our children are going to need specialized programs, but some kids would do well with our intent, more intensely involved in our parks programs. I know in Howarth Park, we have, as we've discussed, we have this wonderful camp system where kids go and they start at the low level of the camp as a camper, and they go through camp stages, and then they become like in-training counselors, and then they get to be counselors, and they get that whole arch, arc of involvement within a community. They get to feel connected, they get job training, they get a whole lot of stuff, and that arc, in comparison, I don't know what it costs us per student. If we included someone in that sort of mainstreamed arc, would that be just as effective or not? It's hard to tell. We could look at demographics of folks who are in the program and make a comparison there. I thought I heard you mention that we might be following children through to graduation. Are you thinking of doing this as a longitudinal study, or are you just looking at kids here and then kids at graduation and sort of making a guess about what happened in between? Because I know there was, there was a discussion of the graduation rate and early childcare, so are we following those kids longitudinally through to graduation so we can see that they behave differently?
For the purpose of this report, and then I'll let Chris chime in, for the purpose of this report, it's a snapshot of data.
Right.
So there's no, we're not following any kids for the purpose of the Community Safety Scorecard.
This particular report?
Yeah. But as an initiative, yeah, as an initiative.
Are we going to do this over the next, you know, we take an eight-year-old and look through till they're 18?
I would say that our intention is to do long-term studies of this. We want to do this every so, every two, three years, and so the idea would be that in time, as we catch up and maybe do three, four, five administrations down the line, we'll be able to draw some comparisons, but it would be on an aggregate. It wouldn't be on an individual level.
So we won't know if the kids who got a more mild program or a more camp-like program performed differently than the kids who were in a more intense, in the trauma-informed services programs.
So a couple...
How will we judge what works?
So a couple thoughts come to mind. One, we have the programmatic evaluation that we do with the Choice Grant Program, which does measure to some effect of, at that point.
My recollection was that was like the parents are asked if they enjoyed having their child in the program. I mean, we don't ask that at the parks to compare, you know, 80, 90 percent sure.
Certainly, that is actually, it definitely included in that programmatic report. There's a lot more that's included in that as well.
Okay.
And we're going to be coming back and presenting more about that particular one in the future, so I don't have all the details for you right now, but there, it is a more comprehensive of program evaluation, which does get more to the individual level. And then my other thought, to answer your question, is one of the intentions with identifying the high-needs area, and I had mentioned, is to get a better understanding of what the needs are for that area, so in a sense, you would get a clear understanding based off of the residents and the community contributing to this assessment of what the needs are, and then to identify programs and strategies to specifically address it, so that theoretically over time, you're measuring the impact in doing these assessments, again, to see what the differences are and the changes over time specific to that high-needs area.
In the aggregate, though?
In the aggregate, yes.
So we're not following kids in one program through their graduation?
As part of the scorecard, no, we're not.
Okay. And I guess this program has been in effect almost 10 years now, in various forms.
Yeah, the Choice Grant Program is, began in 2006, and then the strategic plan for the partnership originally began in 2008.
Okay. And, so I feel that part of the funding basis of our violence prevention, formerly gang prevention, involved reduction in gang crime, and that that was a key factor, and I'm looking for data, any information I can have that shows over the last 10 years, have we had a reduction in gang crime? And have we had a reduction compared to a national average, or pick your city, or, so that, because it may be that everywhere gang crime has gone up, or it may be everywhere it's gone down, and so we need a, but I appreciate that if we're going to, we've spent 10 years, there's a lot of money in this program. I would like to have some way of looking at success specifically in terms of gang crime. And what I'm looking at, the data that I had that we got it the last time, gang-related arrests, this was from a previous presentation, so juvenile gang-related arrests were up 23 percent, and I don't know if that's good or not. I don't know what it means. So, and I looked at, I found another old one, this is from another year, from '07 to '11, they were up 30 percent. So I'm just trying to figure out, are we making progress? I want us to move forward. I want us to move forward in an exciting, new way. This sounds like a great scorecard. I love the poverty piece being brought in, the social equity piece brought in. Help me understand the numbers.
So, yeah, I sent out the PowerPoint...
Yes, thank you.
From the presentation, the annual update that we did to council in October last year.
Right.
We plan on doing another annual presentation update to council early fall, so we'll update those slides that, and the purpose, the specific purpose of that presentation is to take the long-term view of the progress that we've made.
Yes.
We didn't have the comparable cities last time we did that. We will have the comparable cities this time.
Thank you.
So, we look forward to that discussion.
That will help, because, you know, it's, looking at that, you know, I might be alarmed, but it could be, as Councilmember Swedhelm mentioned, that without the program, it'd be a lot worse, so we need to be able to understand that. I have two other questions, and then I'll be, I'll be done. How do we sort out what is called implicit bias in our data as we do these things? Somehow, you know, if you, if you look closely at something or some area, you might see more there than because you're looking, because you're looking there? Or if you're tracking particularly Latino population for some reason or another, you might find more there? How do we sort out implicit bias from our data? Do we have a...
That's a great question. I have no answer for you.
Have we talked about it at all?
Fortunately, that's a great question.
You know, poverty and implicit bias can...
Sure. Well, I think one thing we did was take it to all the different people and groups that basically have made up this process, so, you know, the policy team, the ops team, other folks who could, you know, basically look at the data with us and with their local expert knowledge, say, you know, we're looking too much at this, or we're making too much of that, or actually, this really, you know, fits into my programmatic view this way. And so it's really, all those sayings, and I talked to 80 people, and, you know, these folks talked to so many people, so it's trying to get, you know, several hundred people in the end to get their wisdom and distill it, which is, you know, a tough thing on its own, but really, that's kind of where we tried to eliminate bias by really taking it to folks and having them interpret it with us.
Okay.
And I would add, too, that having Advancement Project as our outside consultant and allowed an unbiased outside perspective to be included in that analysis as well.
I think this is something we may want to talk more about, but not today. And what about other impacted populations, Native American, we have a pocket of Eritrean, we have a number of communities that aren't really big enough to go across the map, but are here and are deeply impacted. Are we addressing any special needs for those particular populations?
So I'll say not specifically in the scorecard beyond making the recommendation within it, that's where we need to go next. As you can imagine, the numbers of these populations are not large enough to, you know, make statistically significant claims at the zone and citywide level, so recognizing that, that's really where we wanted to have these neighborhood collaboratives work together on the next steps, and actually begin to realize some of what we're considering in this report, you know, for the folks, for the populations who are going to benefit most.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I really appreciate that you came to us in advance with this material, went over it with us. I appreciate the open communication that you've established, not just with council, but with our community. So thank you very much. I have my, I have my green band on.
Orange.
Did I say green? Orange.
Part of the partnership.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I've got a couple extra comments. I think it's important for us, too, in looking at the indicators of success and the indicators that we identify, crime data certainly is one that we need to watch, and it's one that every city watches, and sometimes we do see these spikes and waves that occur, not just here, but they happen across regions and across the state as well. But also looking at the other indicators, again, any effective program has to have that balance of the prevention, intervention, the enforcement, and the reentry efforts. We have to, too, account for the number of kids that we reconnect with school, how we impact graduation rates, the number of young men or women that Gustavo redirects into some positive lifestyles, it's Vince and the work that he does with his youth, and how many of them do or don't go down a certain path, with the work that Tony does, too. We're dealing with people, so sometimes it's hard to understand why having two kids in the same household, one goes this way and one goes that way. So it's really hard to track, but it's just so complicated, and it's so evolving every single day in trying to look at how we measure, doing the best that we can, and it goes back to what Councilmember Swedhelm raises, what if we weren't doing anything? What if we just all of a sudden stopped? What would it look like? I don't know. I mean, I know people who have lived here for many, many, many years remember how it used to be at the Sonoma County Fair, at the Downtown Market, at the Cinco de Mayo, there's indicators and changes, but still, this stuff is still so new at the national level that we are not the only ones that are grappling to identify, how do we, how do we measure success? And look how, look how long it took us to get here with all these issues that have come up with our youth, where historically, all we have ever done, and look at all these indicators that we've talked about today with health and others, where we relied on law enforcement to fix this for us, and we were heading down the wrong path, and law enforcement tried and tried and tried, and yet we continue to put more and more money into enforcement efforts that sometimes weren't working, but we still had to do something. But I am, I am proud, I think the entire community needs to be proud of our, of their local efforts here and the work that they're doing, which is working together to try to really move the needle and identify some indicators that we can measure. But unfortunately, and I think when we started with this, down this path, we knew that we will always have those who will choose that lifestyle, and as we can try and try and try... will always have those who will choose that lifestyle, and as we can try and try and try to redirect them. We don't give up, but there will be those that will continue down that path that we will have to deal with, unfortunately, and that will end up being arrested, will end up in prison. But we can't let up, but we also can't let up on our officers being in the classroom, teaching a great program, and being part, and changing their role, and actually being a part of prevention and intervention as well, not just the enforcement aspects.
Mr. Weissaki.
Thank you, Mr. Weissaki. If you wanted to go, I mean, you haven't spoken in quite a while. Everyone's got plenty to say. I didn't want to—
I'm waiting.
Okay, you'll sum it up? I appreciate that.
After you.
All right, very well. You know, all these points are well-taken, but what this money represented when voters passed on it was gang crime prevention in 2004. That's what we felt that we needed to address. And every indicator I've seen shows that gang crime keeps going up. Indeed, even this year, it seems like we have too many headlines that scream that. And in these chambers, not too many years ago, we were applauding when overall crime was down. So if you look at it from that standpoint, ten years in, and we're still grappling with how to solve this issue. Now, maybe it's a nationwide issue, and we're doing better than the rest of the country because we have these programs. But ten years in, with millions spent, and the numbers are still going up, it seems to me that we do need to take a hard look at whether we're doing something right or wrong, and not just whether the parents feel well, that their, their child had a good time at the program. Because every crime stat I see for every year is up. So I'd like to see, what are we going to do to change it? What's the definition of insanity is, no change in procedure expecting a different result? Maybe I've bastardized that, but that seems to be what's going on, or has gone on. I hope it changes. I don't know when this is coming back, but quite frankly, I, I'm uncomfortable with any metric or any data when I see gang crime in the papers a lot, I see gang members on the streets a lot, and I get questions from my neighbors and community members, you know, "What's going on?" And it's not like we don't have resources that other communities don't have. So I look forward to, when is this coming back to us, the final scorecard?
The scorecard, hopefully, we will be finalizing and bringing that back early fall.
Okay. I look forward to that, and I sure would like to see neighborhood advocates and more outreach for the policy team, because I see that as a glaring absence there in terms of bottom-up. I mean, I see some nonprofit organization members in the audience here and on that, and that's great, but also people that care about this town, because, because they do. And they have a perspective that I think should be added. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will, in the discussion, our annual report that we'll bring back, we will look again at those long-term indicators as it relates to youth violence, such as felony arrests, violent crimes. Another factor, some of them are down significantly. If you compare them to state trends, or even down further than state trends, and some of them ebb and flow, they go down, then they come back up. And so in that report, we can have a full discussion, because some of them have decreased significantly over the past six years. For example, juvenile felony arrests. And so, yeah, there's, there's different ways to kind of tease out the youth, youth, youth violence rate, but we'll definitely look forward to have that discussion. And we will compare it to other cities that are similar to us in population and demographics, like Salinas, like Oxnard, like Vallejo. And I think that speaks to Councilmember Schwedhelm's question is, what does it look like if we don't have services? And I don't want to call out other cities, but I think comparatively, we're doing pretty well when you look at our population and demographics comparatively. So we'll bring that forward and look forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank the staff for bringing this forward, and also acknowledge the other members of the partnership who are here today. Thank you for your work on this. I think this does indicate that, you know, we're not doing the same thing year after year, that this is, is a, a new tool that will be valuable to this effort going forward. We are ten years into this, and what we have to go, to go on prior to now is crime stats, so that's important. But now we have a baseline that we can look at in future, future years. I think that'll be valuable. It's, it's really a, a kind of a report card without the grades about the health of the community. And Measure O and the funds that we acquire from Measure O can address really just a small part of that. We have to rely on our partners to work with us on this. And Khalid, I wonder if you can go back one slide. These strategy considerations, there are only a few of them that we actually have total control of. So it takes a partnership to do this. I have been impressed with, in my short time as a participant, as a member of the partnership policy group, that this is a broad-based effort. It, it needs to continue to be that, and we need to, to figure out how to make all of these things happen. And one thing that I would ask as we go forward, particularly with our, with our grants and contracts through Measure O money, that like we do with our overall council goals, that when we bring these, these grants and contracts forward, that we specifically say how they address these strategies that we've got on the, on the slide right now. So thanks again for the report and for the effort on this. Again, I think it'll be valuable as we go forward. Moving on to 3.2.
Item 3.2, Review of CalPERS Actuarial Valuation Report. Debbie Lochner, Chief Financial Officer, presenting.
I'm going to let our wonderful consultant, John Bartel, present for you.
Welcome, Mr. Bartel. Go ahead.
The mic is off. Mr. Bartel.
Oh, my, I'm sorry. My apologies. As I try to say every time I speak to you all, it is absolutely my honor to speak to you. This is a topic that, as I'm reminded, on a day-in-and-day-out basis, only a few people really love. I happen to be one of those. With a little bit of luck, I'll do my best to keep you and the folks watching awake. So some of this information I'm going to go through a little quickly, some a little, a little slower. At the risk of getting myself in serious trouble, please interrupt me as we go and ask questions. I think it'll be way better for you folks, it'll be way easier for me to answer the questions if we, if we do that. What we're starting out, in prior years, one of the things we have not really talked very much about is what is CalPERS, and what is the difference between CalPERS and what is really going on in the private sector? So we start this out with the difference between a defined benefit pension plan and a defined contribution plan. So defined benefit plan is a plan that provides a guaranteed annual pension benefit based on a retirement age, years of service, in this case, of course, years of city service, and some salary. So in the, in the public sector, in California, a large majority of public agencies participate in CalPERS. The private sector, most of the defined benefit plans over the last thirty years or so have terminated, have really gone away, and generally, we're limited with only very large employers that have defined benefit plans. If I, if I may sort of give you a little comment about that, I'm asked a lot about why that is, why the public sector has moved away from defined benefit plans. As a young actuary, I started out working in, on private sector pension plans. I know extremely well why they have gone away. There's really two primary reasons. One is the regulatory and accounting environment makes those plans expensive to administer. And reason number two, the regulatory environment has created significant volatility in terms of how much cash is required for those plans. And so when you talk about private sector entities, whose primary focus these days, as we all know, is short-term profit, that volatility of the contribution requirement makes that short-term profit very hard to predict. So public sector entities concerned with short-term budget, but not short-term profit. And so, and plus, there is a regulatory environment that is much, much more friendly to defined benefit plans. Defined contribution plan, so the defined benefit plan provides a benefit at retirement, and the contribution is really what it takes to get that benefit prefunded. A defined contribution plan is you put money into a particular account, whatever that account value is at retirement is what the individual has for, for their particular retirement needs. I'm going to give you two terms here that I'd like you to just kind of hang, hang on to. One is, we're going to talk a little bit later about actuarial accrued liability. So an actuarial accrued liability is how much should be in the plan to take care of benefits that have been earned under a defined benefit plan. We'll also talk about market value of assets. If you think about a defined contribution plan, that is how much money is there, that is really what the individual owns, if you will. So in defined contribution plans, most private sector entities have moved to those plans and have a 401K plan where individual defers contributions, the employer might make a match of those contributions, they might make a additional contribution, sometimes based on profit, sometimes not, but it's whatever that account balance gets to at retirement. The, one other term in California that we really need to be familiar with when we're talking about public sector pensions, in California, we have something referred to as individual vested right, and it's as determined by the California Supreme Court. California Supreme Court has by and large said, when, when you hire an individual and you tell that individual that they have a particular benefit formula, as part of the contract, as part of the employment contract with that particular individual, you're required to provide that same benefit for the remainder of their career, unless you give them something of equal or greater value. So by and large, most attorneys have interpreted that to mean that it is very difficult to change the defined benefit structure. You can only make changes for people that are being hired in the future, as opposed to making changes for current employees. Very briefly, I'll go through this next slide very, very quickly. Yes?
Excuse me. Could you repeat? You were defining actuarial accrued liability.
Yep.
And somehow it went into, I felt like the sentence diagram I had a little trouble with, so if you could repeat that definition?
I can. Think of actuarial accrued liability as the value of benefits earned by employees at a particular point in time. Now, I have to kind of also mention, when we think about actuarial accrued liability, we need to think about assets. We need to think about how much money do we have to take care of that liability? So we'll talk a little bit later about actuarial accrued liability is a term that is used in defined benefit plan that actuaries use as a target asset value. We will then compare that with the actual asset value. So in a defined contribution plan, there's rarely a target. It is all related to how much money, what is the account value of the individual? CalPERS was established by statute in California in 1932. Local public agencies were allowed to join CalPERS in 1939. This particular bullet is fascinating to me. When CalPERS was originally set up, the initial legislation had very tight restrictions on how CalPERS could invest the money that they were holding for benefits. Proposition 21 was passed in 1984, allowed CalPERS to invest up to twenty-five percent of assets in public equities, so stocks, if you will. Prop 162 passed in 1992, gave the retirement system board the plenary authority to invest the assets as they saw fit. Very shortly after 1992, CalPERS moved to an investment mix that was heavily equity-based. So they are today in the neighborhood of seventy-five percent equities or related items, quite a change from the twenty-five percent in '84, and the, by and large, virtually no equities prior to 1984.
Excuse me, John.
Yeah.
Do you know when the city of Santa Rosa joined CalPERS?
You know, it's kind of funny. I was, I was trying to remember the answer to that as I was sitting here. I think relatively early, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember the date. I would guess in the 50s, but I have to tell you, I don't know the answer to that.
Thanks.
So we can certainly answer, answer that question. I can go back and look through my notes to find that. The other thing that's fascinating about the CalPERS benefits is, for years, benefits went sort of merrily along the way at one particular level. Towards the end of the 90s, there was Senate Bill 400 was passed, which allowed enhanced pension benefits for safety members, the so-called three-at-55 and three-at-50 benefits. We're going to actually give you a picture in another couple of slides that describes those benefits.
How was CalPERS involved, if, if at all, in the passage of that bill?
I'm not an expert on that, but I would, the bill was really pushed by the labor, labor groups. I think it would be accurate to say, I'm not sure I know this for sure, that CalPERS supported it. What I can't tell you is whether or not they actively supported it. I just don't remember that.
No, no, I understand that, but there's a probability that CalPERS weighed in on whether it was feasible or not. I would assume.
Yeah, I think that's right. And then very shortly after SB 400, AB 616, was passed in 2011 that allowed non-safety or miscellaneous formulas to be enhanced. And so that added the two-and-a-half-at-55, two-point-seven-at-55, three-at-six, sixty formulas. This is sort of where I give you a little caution. When I'm describing the names of the formulas, you ought to absolutely think of those as names, not necessarily as descriptors of what they are. I'll kind of give you an example here in a couple of slides. So just in your head, remember that just because three-at-50 is called three-at-50 does not mean that it is fifty percent greater than the two-at-50 formula. So it has to do with the age that an individual retires. The other significant impact of the formulas is, when the formulas were adopted, they applied to all prior service. applied to all prior service for current employees. The safety formulas also applied to all prior service of people who had not yet retired, miscellaneous did not. CalPERS retirement formulas, it used to be that an individual agency could negotiate with their bargaining group, come up with a particular agreement, and it was really based on that agency's contract with CalPERS as to what benefits were provided. In 2012, effective January 1, 2013, the Public Employees Pension Reform Act was passed, signed into law, again, effective January 1, 2013, took the benefit formula out of the hands of the public agencies. It now mandates for all new members in the state, particular benefit formulas. So, the city has what is a bit complex in terms of benefit formulas. For the miscellaneous or non-safety folks, three different benefit tiers. Tier one, for all employees hired before July 7 of 2012. Three at 60, for all employees hired after that date who were members of CalPERS or another system prior to January 1, 13. That's what the reference classic there means. They get the two and a half at 55 formula. And the tier three or Peppera members, these are folks who are new members to California public systems on or after January 1, 13, get what's referred to as the two at 62 formula. Police, safety, tier one, two, and three, same dates. Three at 50 for the earlier hires, three at 55 for the tier two, 2.7 at 57 for tier three. Fire, safety, really the same formulas. Benefits under each formula are calculated as the final average earnings times city service times the benefit factor at the retirement age. So, that benefit factor at the retirement age is where the confusion comes in about the names of the formulas. So, if we look at Slide 5, this happens to be the benefit factors for the three miscellaneous formulas. The lowest line there is referred to by most people in the state as the 2% at 62 formula. In the interest of full disclosure, I refer to it as the two and a half at 67 formula. Why? Because at age 67, the benefit factor is 2.5%. So, if you retire at age 67 with 20 years of city service, it's 20 times 2.5 times final average pay, or you get to a 50% of final average pay. If, on the other hand, you retire at age 62, the benefit factor is 2%, hence the name, 2% at 62. Furthermore, if you retire at age 52, the benefit factor is 1%. No service retirement allowed prior to age 52. That's not true for the other two formulas. And then, if you look at Slide 6, that's the safety benefit factors. You can see the 2.7 at 57 formula caps out with a 2.7 at age 57. If you retire at age 50, your benefit factor is 2%. So, if you retire at age 50, the new Peppera formula, 2% benefit factor, the three at 55 is a 2.4% benefit factor, and the three at 50 is a 3% benefit factor. So, the benefit you get is absolutely a function of the age at which you retire.
I just wanted to thank you for making this more complicated.
Yes, sorry. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm not the one that's making it more complicated. I'm just trying to demonstrate the complexity. What we have with CalPERS is two upcoming changes. There actually are three upcoming changes. The third change I will not talk about, it really applies to smaller agencies, agencies that are in the risk pool. The two that apply to the city are what I refer to as a contribution policy change. In that contribution, in this change, CalPERS moving from calculating the asset value as a smoothed asset value to using market value of assets. So, anybody who follows the stock market can get their head around the fact, when you have 75% of your assets invested in the stock market or in equities, you understand the volatility of the market value from one year to the next.
Quick question. When you say they're moving from asset smoothing, does that mean immediately or in stages?
Yeah, what they're going to do is, by and large, phase this in. So, they will not be giving you your unfunded liability on a smoothed asset value anymore. So, the most recent valuation does not include that. So, the communication of the unfunded liability is moving immediately, if you will.
To market value.
That's right. The contribution impact is being phased in over a five-year period. So, just very, very simply, if your old rate was 15% of pay and CalPERS says, no, on a smooth basis, your rate was 15, on a market value basis, your rate should be 20, they're going to step into that 20 over a five-year period. So, it's that five-year ramp up that's a phase in, if you will.
For the contribution, but for the value of the assets, we won't see actuarial value again then, will we?
You will not. That's correct.
So, basically, they're admitting that that was a, I want to say phony number.
Yeah, you would not hear me say they're admitting that. I think what they are saying is, the old smoothing method had the potential for serious issues. I think they absolutely are saying that.
Now, is that leading to the cockroach theory?
So, help me understand the cockroach theory.
Well, there's never just one.
It's true. So, that's issue number one, is that contribution policy, the five-year phase in. Issue number two are assumption changes. CalPERS really does an experience analysis on a pretty regular basis. They always look and want to know that the assumptions they have are good and reasonable. What's fascinating about the assumption study, with the exception of one assumption, all of the changes fall into the category of very, very minor. People are retiring a little bit later than, you know, than CalPERS had expected. Termination rates a little bit lower, salary increases, for safety folks, actually higher, closer to retirement, lower earlier in their career. But, the one big assumption change is mortality. CalPERS is including in their mortality assumption now, something they did not before, and that is the expectation that people will continue to live longer. I've done actuarial work for a long time now, and I can tell you it's absolutely true that we would do a study and we would go, oh, people are living longer, so let's strengthen the mortality table. We would do another study and we would go, oh, people are living longer, let's strengthen the mortality table. And so, what we really, as a profession, discovered is that we were really good at recognizing what had happened in the past, but we weren't very good at looking at that pattern and saying, gee, is this going to continue into the future? So, there's now an actuarial standard of practice that requires all actuaries to, by and large, raise their hand and say, do you think mortality will continue to improve or not? Most actuaries raise their hand very quickly and say, hmm, ever since, by and large, we have universal indoor plumbing, mortality continues to improve, we really don't see any change in that. So, they are now anticipating future mortality. Now, what that really means is, if you have an individual who's 60 years old, has a particular life expectancy, that life expectancy will be shorter than the individual who is 60 years old 10 years from today, and shorter still than the individual who's going to be 60, 20 years from today. So, our children, our grandchildren will generally live to an older age than we will, if you will. So, CalPERS is now anticipating those changes. That has a big impact on the numbers. Those changes have not yet been factored into the valuation. They will be in the next valuation when we projected your contribution rates. We've done our best to estimate what we think the impact will be on your contributions.
How will CalPERS be handling it, because we have three different programs? So, will they be looking at that, the mortality improvements in each category, miscellaneous, police, and fire? Or is it all going to be the same?
No, it's actually what they do is break it out separately. They do study the results separately for those three groups. They actually break out a couple of other groups, state, peace officers, so on and so forth. But, the three groups that we have here, they really look at it separately for miscellaneous, police, and fire. Generally, what's fascinating is, at retirement, the life expectancy for safety is very slightly higher than for non-safety. So, they do look at that, they do the calculation separately, they use separate mortality tables for each of those groups.
Do they break out safety between fire and police?
Say that again, please.
Do they break out fire and police within safety?
Yeah, yes, yes. You're going to see contribution rates separately.
Mortality, though.
Mortality, yes, they do.
Who lives longer?
Say it again?
Who lives longer, fire or police?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can only tell you, my recollection is, there's not much of a difference.
You went to my daughter's, you know, pre-industrial revolution, you know, problem with sanitation. I thought she might have this off the top of her head.
Yeah, sorry. That's actually something I ought to know, I just don't. So, the city issued a pension obligation bond back in 2003, refinanced that bond in 2013. The final payments are expected to be made in 2025. We mention this because when projecting the contribution rates, I feel very strongly that your rates ought to include any debt service on your pension obligation bond. The reason you have a pension obligation bond is to pay off your pension unfunded liability. Those payments are absolutely related to that. Now, what CalPERS provides does not include debt service. What we've done is, we've taken that debt service and added it to the CalPERS contributions. Slide nine, I'm going to talk about very, very quickly. It's really a snapshot of demographic information for the city's miscellaneous plan. 781 actives back in '94, 266 folks receiving a pension benefit in '94, and then you go to 2013. The order of magnitude of the numbers is a little bit different for this city versus other cities, but that pattern of now 884 active employees and 847 folks receiving a pension benefit is actually quite similar. There is a big increase in the number of retirements compared to active employees. I kind of like the way this particular graph looks. There's two bars I'd really like to direct you to. A dark red bar, that's the number of active employees, and then the blue bar, which are the number of folks in payment status. What you really see is the number of folks in payment status getting a benefit, really just a steady increase over that period of time. Over the last five, six years, the number of active employees has declined a little bit. You are now at the point where you almost have the exact same number of folks receiving benefits as working for the city. Now, to be fair, not all of those retirees are what I will refer to as career employees. If you have an individual who works here for five years, goes off and works someplace else, they are still in those counts. The city is only responsible for five years' worth of benefits at the city's benefit formula, but that individual would be counted as one, if you will. So, it's not exactly a one-to-one relationship. When we start talking about safety, that's a little bit different, way more common. When you hire a safety officer, they work a full career with the city, quite different than for miscellaneous. Slide 11 gets to that term that I tried to define earlier, the actuarial accrued liability. So, the actuarial liability or actuarial accrued liability in the June 3012 valuation, $508.6 million. In the June 3013 valuation, $531.8. The actuarial accrued liability, if we go back to that definition, it's the value of benefits due to service that's already been rendered. If you think about active service, as people render one more year's worth of service, their value goes up, and they're one more year closer to getting that benefit. So, because it's discounted with the time value of money, if you will, you have one year less of discount. So, you should expect that actuarial accrued liability, that target asset value, to grow as time goes by. We have a graph that will show the growth of that number over the last several years. And then, you see actuarial asset value. This is the smoothed market value that I was talking about before. The June 3012 number comes straight from the CalPERS actuarial report. The right-hand column number is a number we calculated. You will not find that number in the actuarial report. We only put it here for comparison purposes. And so, when you look at the, yes?
Could you briefly explain the difference between the smoothed value and the market value?
Yeah, yeah. Easy way to think of it. Let's pretend for a moment, CalPERS thinks the investment return is going to be seven and a half, and it ends up being 22 and a half, rather than seven and a half. What CalPERS does is, they will take the difference in that actual versus expected return and smooth it over 15 years. They'll take 1/15 of that number, and that will be the impact on the actuarial value of assets. So, in this particular, in my particular example, 22 and a half percent actual return, 8 and a half percent is what would be factored into determining the actuarial value. So, hold that thought for a moment, because that sounds like, gee, we're being a little conservative. But, if you go the other way, if you have a 15% loss, then what you're doing is, you're waiting to recognize losses, and we'll see. We have a slide that is actually not part of the presentation. I'd be happy to show you, but what it showed, you can see it if you look here just for a moment. You can kind of see it in the two years. What you really see is unfunded liability at June 3012, on a smoothed basis, $58.8 million bucks. Okay? Market value unfunded liability, 129.3. What happened here? The reason there's a difference between the 379 market value of assets and the 449 actuarial value is because CalPERS is smoothing very large investment losses. And the way they smooth it over a long period of time means there is a big gap in the unfunded liability. So, in these numbers, the actuarial accrued liability is the same number. The difference in the unfunded liability is market, so what could you sell your instruments for, and that 1/15 recognition of investment losses. So, you're going to, in a couple of slides, see that the investment losses in 2008, 2009 have have by and large not been made up, if you will.
So I thought I heard you say earlier that they were going to drop using the actuarial?
Yes.
So in the future, we would only see the bottom?
That's correct.
Of this chart?
That's absolutely correct.
We wouldn't see the upper part. So we would see the 129 in the future and never see the 58?
That's right.
Million.
So if in your June 3014 CAFR, you will see two unfunded liabilities. You'll see the, I'm saying this like I looked at your CAFR earlier today. I did not, so I hope I'm right about this. You will see an unfunded liability of $58.8 million, which is what CalPERS told you to put in the CAFR last time, and you will see $110.2 million. And the reason for that difference is because CalPERS changed the asset smoothing policy, not because anything exciting happened to the liability or the assets. It's they are now recognizing all of those asset losses that they had not yet recognized before.
If I may, so I'm thinking about the numbers that we're looking at here, but I'm also thinking about the pension obligation bond numbers?
Yes.
Are these added together anywhere?
Oh, yeah. So here, these numbers do not include what you owe on the pension obligation bond. So this unfunded liability is based on the pension obligation bond, the fact that you borrowed it, and you gave that money to CalPERS. So it includes the proceeds. It does not include the debt. So from an accounting perspective, the accountants have said, you already recognized that debt on your financial statement. When they want to look at your unfunded liability from an accounting perspective, they don't want those two to be mushed together. You still will recognize both, but you'll recognize them in different places. So this $110.2 million does not include what you owe on the pension obligation bond. And what you owe on the pension obligation bond, I have to go back to that slide, you owe about $32 million. That 32, by the way...
Not 50 million?
50 was the... Yeah, 50 was the original amount, back in 2003. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, 32, and the 32 is not all miscellaneous. It's split between police, fire, and miscellaneous.
I see that. Okay, thank you. But so that's not going to carry with us through the rest of this conversation.
Here's what, so, you know, I'm an actuary. I'm not very good at saying yes or no. I'm much better at saying maybe. When it comes to your...
I just don't want to lose $50 million or 32 million.
When it comes to debt service on the remaining 32?
Yes.
That will be in the contributions.
It will be.
It will be.
Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you.
Slide 12 is, in my opinion, one of the more important slides that we have here. What it really shows is the volatility on both an actuarial value and a market value basis. So when you see in the little legend at the bottom, AVA, that's the actuarial value. When you see MVA, that's the market value of assets rate of return. The thing that is striking about this is prior to 2005, CalPERS' old, old smoothing method did not get very far from the market value. When you begin to look at the actuarial value, that's when they move to that 15-year recognition, you see the actuarial rate of return hovering around the assumed rate of return. In 2008, CalPERS, yes?
John, quick question. The title says asset value millions, yet I see no numbers, no values.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. That is, that's what happens when my staff lets me mess with the discussion outline. That header is wrong, and I didn't, I'm glad you pointed that out. It really is the actuarial, it's the investment return. It's CalPERS investment return should be the header on that slide. Sorry about that. That title will carry over to the next slide. If you look at that market value rate of return, which is that solid green line with the squares, no matter how you slice it, that is volatile from one year to the next. And even though CalPERS has a 7.5% rate of return, my English teacher from grammar school would be offended by this, but you ain't even close in any of those years to 7.5% return. It is significantly different, for actual is significantly different than reality in almost every one of those years. So that volatility will translate into two things. Number one, your unfunded liability will vary a lot. So your accounting disclosure now, because it's going to be based on the market value, will vary a lot, both good and bad, by the way. And your contributions will have much, much more volatility in them than you have seen in the past. So when we get to the very end, the very last couple of slides, one comment that I will make to you is we are encouraging clients to think about two different issues. Issue number one is unfunded liability, and does it make sense to begin to pay the unfunded liability down sooner than CalPERS might ask you to? That's question number one. And question number two, in that same context, what is volatility of where the contribution rates might go, particularly from a budget standpoint, important or not to the city? And so the answer to those two questions might drive you to some potential solutions, and that will get to the very last couple of slides. So I'd like you to remember this particular slide. I'm also going to point out one thing without talking about the detail, although I'd be happy to if you really want me to. I'd like you to take a look at 2009. So there is this little bullet, triangular bullet point sitting out here that's minus 5.7. Here's what that is. That is CalPERS asset smoothing if the CalPERS board had not decided to modify their own asset smoothing method. So in other words, CalPERS in the June 3009 report would have recognized a more of the investment losses, but they took a pass on that. And that pass meant that they used a rate of return of 5.6 compared to minus 24, as opposed to minus 5.7 compared to minus 24. Why did they do that? To mitigate contribution increases, to mitigate the volatility that is now really going to be there, because the minus 24 under the new method would be fully recognized. So that resulted in lower contributions and less paying of the unfunded liability. Slide 13, two bars on this slide going back to June 3094. Red bar is the liability. Just kind of watch that liability bar increase. This is miscellaneous. What is almost impossible to see, you can see it if you look really hard, by the way, it's almost impossible to see the benefit improvement here. What you do see is a steady increase in that liability bar over time. What you also see is that dark green bar, that's the market value of assets, not the actuarial value. It's the market value. And what you see in 2007 is assets greater than the liability, and then in 2008, they are virtually equal, and then in 2009, you went, you go from having assets greater than the liability to having assets short of the liability by about $140 million.
John, if I can stop you there. You said that you cannot see the benefit improvement in the red, so that would be...
No, what I'm telling you is it's there. It's hard to see.
I see the line going up. What's hard to see about that?
Which line are you talking about?
The red.
The red bar. The red bar would have continued to go up had you not improved benefits. It would be at a lower level. It'd be at a lower level, but it would not be as significant. What I'm really trying to say there is the big reason why you have an unfunded liability is not the benefit improvement, it's the investment losses. Benefit improvement hurt, but not the bulk of the unfunded liability.
I would like to see those numbers behind that. That's fine. I mean, the investment losses, didn't those come hand-in-hand with the benefit improvement? They were going to pay for the benefit improvement.
Well, when you say hand-in-hand, the benefit improvement certainly didn't cause the investment losses. What I'm really saying is...
No, I agree with that.
If you look at 2007, you had $392 million in assets, and then you go to 2009, you had $283 million. That drop in the assets is the recession, and there is no question, the red bar is higher because of the benefit improvements. But the bulk of the distance between the red bar and the green bar is not the benefit improvement, it is the asset loss.
I agree with what you're saying partly. I just think the steady march upward, some of that's more retirees and some of that's...
Yeah, the steady march upward would be there, whether you had the benefit improvement or not. Now, it wouldn't be quite as high, but absolutely the red bar would continue to grow whether you had a benefit improvement or not. No doubt, there's no doubt in my mind about that. It might be lower, but it's not going to be as low. The bulk of that unfunded liability is not because of the benefit improvement.
If you go to the year 2000?
Yep.
You've got plenty of assets to pay, and that's basically when SP400 was being considered. Am I, is that correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Was that when SP400 was being considered?
SP400 was the late 90s. That's right. '99 is when it was passed. But SP400 does not apply to miscellaneous. The AB616 does, that's 2001.
Understand, but I'm just curious as to where the assurance was coming for, that the retroactive benefits can be covered, and that it seems to tell the tale that we've got plenty of money in the bank, or we've got plenty of assets.
Yeah, make no mistake, make no mistake about it. Everybody should understand that when the benefits were negotiated, when those bills were passed, when they begin to take effect, whether we're talking about safety or non-safety, what I want you to do is look at the green bar in 2000, $211 million, dropped to 194, dropped to 180. That was the dot-com bubble. And so the green bar arguably should have kept going. There is no doubt, when agencies negotiated the benefit improvements, the information that they had did not always take into account that downturn in the assets. So that, if that's where you were going, that's, I absolutely agree with that.
And that's somewhat normal in our economy. We have booms, we have busts.
That's right.
Stay there, we'll come back to that.
Yeah, the difference, though, is the order of magnitude of the bust. Slide 14 shows the history of the city's contribution. This is also, if, two lines on this graph, the total contribution, which is that green line with the squares, and the normal cost rate. So what you really see here is the normal cost rate popping up in '03, '04. If the actuarial liability represents the value of benefits that have been earned, normal cost rate represents the value of benefits being earned. This happens to be the employer contribution. The employer portion does not include member contributions. We have not built into this particular graph the debt service on the pension obligation bond. So because this is historical, we're pulling this straight out of the CalPERS reports. Interesting to note, city's contribution dropped to zero for a short period of time. That's about the time that you all negotiated your benefit improvements. And then you see the steady increase in the rate, beginning in 1112. And if we look at the current rates from the June 3012 and June 3013 valuation, we have a total normal cost of, it'll go to the right-hand column, June 3013 valuation determines the city's 15, 16 rates, total normal cost, total value of benefits being earned, 18.9. Members pay a member rate of eight. That gets to an employer, normal cost of 11. Payoff of funded liability, 8.9%. Gets you to a total city CalPERS rate of 19.9. Add the POV debt service of 3.4%, you get to a total city rate of 23.3. And then employees' cost share pay 1.5% of the city's rate, reducing the net city rate to 21.8%. So the city's rate, including the POV, reduced for cost sharing, is the 21.8, very similar to what it was from the prior valuation. Next couple of slides talk about our assumptions for projecting the city's contribution rates. We're taking into account actual investment return, June 3014, 18.4%, and then June 3015, using actual return through February 8th, and assumed return for the next four months. We get to an expected return of 4.3 for June 3015, and then 7.5% thereafter. And we also look at sensitivity, poor investment return versus good. Poor investment return is by and large low, single-digit rates of return. Good investment return is by and large low, double-digit rates of return.
John, before you leave this slide, one quick question. Footnote four, current year?
Yep.
February 28th, our returns 1.9?
1.8, 1.8 through...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would be for the first eight months.
And then is this going to pop up to 7.5% for the last four months?
No. Well, what we're saying is the last four months is CalPERS' assumed rate of return...
Which is?
For just 7.5. So it would be 7.5 for those four months. We're also showing what happens if the investment return is poor, so we're trying to give you some sensitivity for the June 3015 return. If investment return remains poor, it'd be 1.9. If it's good, 6.7.
Appreciate that, okay? You're not just accepting their assumption. Thank you.
We're also taking into account changes in demographics, how you hire people. And when you look at slide 17, including debt service as well as the employee cost sharing, that green line gets to a city contribution rate that would be high 20s if CalPERS earned 7.5. It would be low, excuse me, mid to upper 30s if CalPERS investment return is poor, and it will be in, back into the teens if CalPERS investment return is good. So the one thing you can count on is that it will, CalPERS investment return will not be exactly that 7.5. So we believe there is a, what I'll call a 50% confidence level, that your actual rate will be between those upper squares and the lower squares. 25% chance that it might be higher than the upper squares, 25% chance that it might be lower... lower than the lower squares. So, think about this for a second. What that means is, the investment return volatility will generate volatility on contributions.
If I may, I would like to really thank you for the, the goalposts.
Yeah.
It's very useful to see what the confidence intervals are.
Yeah.
And I wonder if staff can look at this and just let us know, which years do we renegotiate contract next? Are we, are we entering a cycle, or do we have a couple more years to go? Just, I'm just trying to remember whether we're negotiating in the spring of next year again, or...
I'm not certain. I think our contracts expire at the end of next fiscal year, so we'd be negotiating toward the end of next year. Yeah, spring of next year will be...
Spring of next year, so spring of, of 1617.
Spring of next calendar year coming up.
Okay.
So, 2016.
16, yes.
2016.
Right.
That's still within 1516.
One of the things that concerns me is that it's hard, as a council member, to look at a year's snapshot of information, and make a informed decision about what to do in the next two to three years. Especially with the level of volatility that you're telling us about. And if I understand what you've told me about what CalPERS is doing, they're changing again the, the way that the smoothing is going by removing it.
That's right.
Which means we will experience even more volatility.
That's right.
In our budget cycles.
That's right.
If we follow whatever the previous years, or the previous two years documents are.
Yeah, you, you, I think you absolutely understand that. That's right. And so, the question I think council should seriously think about is whether that volatility, how big of a concern that is or not, and whether or not you would want to try to do something. I, I did want to go back to slide 15, because there's something on slide 15 I should have mentioned, I did not.
Great, go back to 15 and...
So, slide 15, there's a little footnote there. We have the 1.5% cost sharing in 1516. For miscellaneous, that goes to 2.5% for 1617. So, now, if we go to this particular slide, I have a high degree of confidence, this is no consolation. Just so you know, I know that before I make this next statement. When we look at where your contribution rates are going to go, and the cost sharing that employees have, whether it's, by the way, for safety or miscellaneous, you all are a bit ahead of where other agencies are. So, this line, that green line, would be less flat, steeper, had you not had the, negotiated the cost sharing that you do have. When we look at this for other agencies, they not, many of them do not have that cost sharing, and have employees paying, excuse me, some of the employers continue to pay the member contribution rate. Now, that's changing, but that's noticeably different than for, for you folks. I wanted to mention that to you.
Thank you. And I think we, we had a lot of conversation about cost sharing, and I think really appreciate that our employees stepped up to provide cost sharing. One of the ways that we did that was that we increased salaries so that we could have cost sharing. And for me, that's sort of a footrace between the benefit of the cost sharing and what we have to pay out more down the road, because we raised salaries in order to achieve it. Do we have information about the debt service in dollars, as opposed to just in percentages also?
The answer is, we do, not in the presentation.
Okay.
But, but...
I may want to see the dollars, to, sometimes the percentages are kind of hard to gauge what, what the differences are. If we had, so, we, well, let's...
Let me just add on one more request. When we see it in absolute dollars, will your statement that we have it better than comparable cities still hold true, as opposed, absolute dollars as opposed to percentages?
Well, dollars are hard to compare from one agency to the next, because of the difference in size. If you did a per capita dollar, you might, you might be able to compare, but actually, that's actually one of the reasons why we look at percentages, because you can compare contribution rates from one agency. But if you compared yourself to City of Sacramento, or City of Healdsburg, you look different. You're different sizes.
Understood, but that's, we write, our budget, and we write checks in dollars, not in percentages.
No, no, I understand that, but, but those dollars are, you could do per capita to compare, but the dollar amounts, I don't, I'm, I understand, I understand the interest in the dollars, and we could easily generate this graph as a total dollar amount, if you wanted to see that. That's, we actually have it, we just don't have it in the presentation. Slide 18, so in the interest of full disclosure, my eyes are not very good, I want you to know that. I can't read a single number on that graph. But I actually continue to put it up there. Why do I continue to put it up there? This is actually the good news in the CalPERS contribution policy change. Why is it good news? Because when you get out, 30 years from now, long time, when you get out there, your contribution rate, if CalPERS gets the 7.5% investment return, gets down to the normal cost. Here's what that means. That means your unfunded liability, assuming for a moment you don't take more aggressive action, will be paid off. If we had prepared this graph under the old contribution policy, that solid green line with the 7.5% return would not get to the normal cost rate in 30 years. It would get to a relatively high rate, a little bit lower, but it would remain flat, and by and large, continue to very modestly come down. But it would probably be 20% of pay 30 years from now, under the old contribution policy. So, I'm a lifetime resident of the state. I actually look at this particular graph and see this as very good news. I say it is very good news, because the CalPERS actuaries have recognized that the old method, I hate to use these words, but comes very, very close to not being sustainable for the long run. The new policy, very painful in the short run. You see the rate coming down in '25, '26. That's because the POV debt service is paid off, and so, that's the point in time at which your rates begin to be a little easier to manage. Does not mean they're not going to be volatile. They will be volatile, but, but it's that high plateau rate in those earlier years.
I mean, if I may, the, the rates being volatile, I would assume that this is a guaranteed 7.5% year-by-year return compounding itself.
I'm sorry, ask the question again, please.
The preceding, the precursor was, the rates are going to be volatile.
Yes, yes.
We've seen that in the other charts.
Right.
But this chart here assumes that we're going to have a steady return of 7.5% for 30 years.
Well, let's be clear, it, it provides three scenarios. So, the three scenarios are, 7.5% return, and then what I refer to as poor investment return. Those are the upper squares, if you will, and then good investment return. In each of those years, between the upper and the lower, that's what we would refer to as a 50% confidence, that your rate will fall within those, doesn't, no guarantee that it wouldn't be higher or lower than those amounts, but that's the range, and that range is, is really an indication of the volatility of CalPERS investment return. So the one line, you are right, shows 7.5, but the upper and lower shows the volatility, if you will, of the investment return.
And what rates were those for poor and for above average?
Yeah, the way that I would think of it is, poor is by and large, on average, low single-digit.
Is that two, is that three?
Well, it, so, I'm, I'm going to apologize in advance for this answer. It actually is a lower return in the short run, and a higher average in the long run. What we're doing is, the detail of this calculation is, we take into account the standard deviation of, of the investment that CalPERS has. And so, in one year, it's a, the poor is negative. In three years, we think that poor is going to get to a higher than a negative return.
No, that's the definition of volatility, but I, but what jumps out at me, John, is you're asking me to believe CalPERS, and they've shown to have some major errors in, in their assumptions. This is CalPERS, or is this...
Well, so, I, let me, do you mind if I ask a question about that?
Of course.
Because the, are you, are you asking me whether I think the 7.5% is the right assumption for CalPERS investment mix?
No, I'm asking you, if that's CalPERS's number, at 7.5% for 30 years, that's what we're going to see, and then, and we'll have it paid off, assuming these rates of contribution.
I hope you understand, no one is saying you're going to see 7.5. What you're seeing is, if you do see 7.5, this is what it would be. But, but, you, if you remember that investment return graph, there was not a single year that was very close to 7.5. So there will be volatility. I can promise you, your actual contributions will not fall exactly on that green line. The question becomes, how far away? And what we're trying to show here is the sensitivity away from the green line, and what we're trying to say is, between that upper and lower square, that's a, we have a 50% confidence that your actual rate will fall within that. What that, the message you could, you should get from that is, rates will be volatile. I don't think I can say that enough.
So, the rate will be between 4% and 45%? Is that what I see?
Which year are you looking at?
The very last year, when everything's paid off, and Dorothy gets home to Kansas.
I'm going to, I'm going to believe you, because I can't read those numbers. So, I, I, it, no doubt, it's, it's in that neighborhood of 5% to 44.
I could agree that it's 50% with that, with that range. Thank you.
That's 30 years from now, so I wouldn't budget, I'm betting you're not budgeting for 30 years from now.
So, following up on that line, so the thick green line we're looking at is CalPERS assumptions for the next 30 years applied.
That's right.
And we have this fairly significant...
Yes, ma'am.
Error.
I'll refer to it as volatility, not necessarily error.
Volatility figure, okay.
Yes.
Hard to predict the future.
Yes.
Especially, anyway.
Yes.
If you were drawing a line, would it look like this line?
The 7.5?
If you were advising your community on how to get to the 4.9%,
Yeah.
is this the line you would draw?
No. I would do two things. I would say that, first of all, let me, let me answer a question that wasn't asked, that I think is important. And that is, the 7.5% return, we've looked at that, we've looked at the detail, we've looked at what investment advisors think the market is going to do, what we, what, and so, based on that information, I think that 7.5 is not a bad 50% confidence level number. In other words, half the time, higher, half the time, lower, on average, pretty close to that 7.5. The thing that I'm worried about, and I think that's a very reasonable, long-term assumption, the thing that I'm worried about is, what's going to happen before you get 30 years out? In other words, what happens in the next five, 10 years?
Yes.
And, and in the next five, 10 years, what, my, my comment is, you know, trust and verify. So here's what I mean by that. Trust that CalPERS knows, knows what they're doing, you're stuck with them, so, so, trust. But, hedge your bets a little bit, and consider doing something to mitigate that volatility. The challenge with that recommendation, just so you know, the challenge with that recommendation is, for some agencies, that might have large unrestricted reserves, might have cash to be able to mitigate that, that's a recommendation they will take in a heartbeat, and go merrily along their way. Not all of my clients have a lot of extra cash lying around. And so, you have to, you have to be, you have to, you have to do with what you have, if you will. And so, looking at the mitigation to the volatility, in my opinion, is something you ought to absolutely think about, but you have to do it within the means that you have. And, and so, we'll get, in the last couple of slides, so I'm probably taking way more time on this topic than you all really wanted me to take.
One, one quick question to our CFO, Debbie.
Let him finish his sentence.
Well, let me finish my sentence.
I, I actually want to hear the end of the sentence.
When we get to the last two slides, in my opinion, that's where the punch, where punchline will be. What can you do to mitigate? What can, and within your means, I promise you, that there will be something you can do. You may choose not to do it, but all I'm suggesting is, that if you choose not to do it, just do it with your eyes open.
The, the other...
Let's keep going.
Okay. So, the, what I'm going to do is, go through these next slides relatively quickly. They show police safety, beginning on slide 19. What I'll just point out on police safety is, if you remember that red bar, that's the active, number of active employees. When you hire a police officer, it's not quite right, I'm being a little simplistic here, common for you to historically hire them in their twenties, and they work through their full career for you. So when they retire, they were a full-career retiree. So when you look at 211 folks receiving a benefit, compared to 162 actives, that is a lot of liability for people who are no longer working at the city. That also means you have a lot of assets compared to your current payroll, and that generates even more volatility, if you will. So, this is a recurring theme, if you will. Again, when we look at the unfunded liability for police safety, on an actuarial value basis, 40.2 at June 3012. Market value was 65.7 at June 3013, because June 3013 investment return was generally good. The market value went up a little bit more than expected. The actual market value drops, but it's still substantially bigger than the old actuarial value number. You can kind of see that historical comparison. The liability bar, the red bar, just kind of a steady increase, the market value, big decline in the recession in eight and nine. So you get to the point where you still have a large unfunded liability at, that we are projecting at June 3015. This is the history of the city's... This is the history of the city's contribution. Again, I'm going to go through this quickly. The cost-sharing for police, 3% for 1516, going to 4% for 1617. Again, what, one of the things that's fascinating to me, you all are a little ahead of the curve, we think many agencies will move in the direction that you are at with more safety, And then the projection of the contribution rate, again, including debt service in the short run, you're at mid-30s, going to low-40s, taking into account the debt service on the pension obligation bond, and the reduction for cost-sharing. This is the volatility, this next graph that shows the volatility. I don't know that I would worry too much about the long run, but this is the volatility that I think might give you some cause for heartburn, if you will.
My quick question to Debbie is, in the Long-Term Financial Subcommittee, for the 10-year projection, what number are you, are you using for the contribution projection?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we are using CalPERS' projected rates for the next five years, and, including our analysis of what the pension obligation bond percentage is. So we have included that, our expectation of what those rates are going to do, based on what we've received from CalPERS.
So, John?
And from, and from John.
Our rates are, our rates are slightly different, because we've taken into account more recent investment return. It turns out, our rates are actually a little bit below the CalPERS' projected numbers, because we take into account the fact that you're hiring Peppera employees, the CalPERS' projections don't. We take into account the fact that investment return in the current fiscal year is a little bit below, those don't quite offset each other.
It'd be close to the green highlighted.
Yeah, they'd be quite close. There really is very little difference between ours and theirs. Here, again, the slide that I can't read, that I think you really ought to look to what's going on in 30 years. Again, the drop in the contribution in 2526, because of the POB debt service, fire, safety. Again, I'm going to go through these quickly.
Now, if you, this one here, I think's important. Can you just please explain Perse wages to everyone here? Because that's, isn't that what the benefits are based upon?
That's right. Exactly right. So those are for safety, it's a little bit simplistic, but by and large, they are base pay plus some additional items. The additional items are typically not large, uniform allowance, if you paid the member contribution, they would include that, you don't, so, it does not.
So it went from $50,719.94
Yes.
20 years later, to $123,800.
That's right.
Thank you.
Again, the number of folks in benefit, in benefit-payment status, 140 compared to 123 active employees, again, fire, safety, are typically much more career employees. Unfunded liability, actuarial value basis, 36.4, market value, 56.1 at June 3012, and then at June 3013, 53.4. So that's the unfunded liability. The history of that relationship between the market value and the actuarial value, again, you see gaps in some of the earlier years, the big gaps really happened because of the decline in investments, 2008, 2009. History of the contribution rate, again, reflective of the cost-sharing, fire, safety, cost-sharing, 3% for 1617, and there, and thereafter. Projection of the contribution rates, a little lower, including the POB debt service, so you're talking mid-30s to very high 30s, and the long-term projection of the rates. So I went through police and fire relatively quickly, because we took a fair amount of time on miscellaneous. Order of magnitude, the numbers are different, a little more volatility for safety than for miscellaneous. Very quickly, there is a new accounting standard, Governmental Accounting Standards Board's Statement Number 68, that will be implemented for the city's current fiscal year-end, June You will get that information from CalPERS, this is not meant to be a replacement for that, it's meant to kind of give you a heads-up in terms of what we think the order of magnitude of your, under GASB 68, you will recognize your full unfunded liability on your financial statement. We think that number will be $159 million. So just so you know, that is projected June 3014 unfunded liability. June 3013, if you had recognized it, it then, that number, instead of being 159, would be 224 million. Now, why is it lower? There's really one reason. CalPERS' June 3014 investment return, 18% compared to seven-and-a-half. And so, that had a, it really has a leveraged impact on the market value of assets, the accountants now are going to be calling that the fiduciary net position, it's really the market value of assets. But it had a big impact on your market value of assets for your three plans. Just very, very simply, $70,000, excuse me, $70 million higher than it otherwise would have been.
So based on the always predictable volatility
Yes.
We should expect this number to go up and down
Yes.
Constantly.
That's right. That's absolutely right. And in fact, what you should, what you should do is understand that it's going to go up and down. You should not, it, when you think about this number, this number only peripherally drives your budget. What I mean is, the fact that it's 159 or 220, in and of itself, doesn't drive your budget. You don't need this cash set aside, it's kind of like a homeowner whose house, whose the value of their house varies a bit, might be, might be below what they owe, or above what they owe. Doesn't, doesn't mean they should close up and move, but it does mean that there is a lot more volatility than people really thought. What you probably should be more worried about is how this translates to your contribution, and how, from a budget standpoint, you deal, you deal with that.
So, following up on the home analogy.
Yep.
We've just come through a cycle, where when people's homes went up, they refinanced, they borrowed, there were problems.
Yes.
And it concerns me when we see this number alone, without the history of the number going up and down.
Oh, that's right.
It would be easy to look at that number and go, wow, we've improved so much that we don't need to worry about this as much as we used to.
Oh, yeah. I hope you're not hearing me say that.
I'm not hearing you say that, I'm, I'm concerned I will hear it.
Yeah. One of the things I would really encourage everybody to do about that very issue, is refer back to the three slides like this one. So slide 32 shows the assets and liabilities. So, how do I say this? In 2007, you had assets greater than liabilities. Does that mean, in the next year, you're going to have assets greater than liabilities? No. It means that at that point in time, you were just fine. And the fact that, two years later, you had a big unfunded liability, should similarly not create a panic. It should create a recognition that this is a volatile number, and that is the nature, if you will, of a defined benefit plan. The, the big, a bigger concern for me is the fact that this gap between the liability and the assets has been there and stayed there for several years. That is a very large, in very large part, because CalPERS, when they charged you for your unfunded liability back here, they didn't look at that full unfunded liability. They ignored the fact that it was 52, and used a much lower number to determine your contribution, which really meant that you're not paying that unfunded liability down. So I use this analogy all the time, I used it with clients before CalPERS changed their contribution policy. I am confident I said this to the city council, this city council at one time or another, but it was, under the old contribution policy, it was worse than having a credit card and making the minimum payment. So if you're giving advice to a young couple who have, who has a large credit card debt, would it be to make the minimum payment on the credit card? No, of course not. Well, the old CalPERS contribution was worse than that, because it was significantly less than interest on the unfunded liability, which has allowed good investment return to not make up the difference in the unfunded liability. So, my comment to you is, when we get to, when we get to, really, slides 39 and 40, this is, in my mind, the punchline. And the punchline is, what can you do to mitigate that unfunded liability? I want you to understand that everything I put up here is not necessarily something I'm recommending, but I'm just putting it here for informational purposes.
Before you get to the punchline, can I just
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Back to that slide before, the 159, how do rating agencies look at that figure with the volatility? I just read something in the news today about a city rating getting affected.
Let me tell you what, so this is probably going to be a longer answer than you want, I'll apologize in advance. I, I really think what, what the rating agencies do is, they look at that number, and they make an assessment on two things. They go, do you, do you, does the agency have the wherewithal to make the contribution to pay that number down? That's question number one, I think, they ask. And question number two that they ask is, is the contribution that they are making designed to pay that number off? So, let me say that a little bit differently. Under the old contribution policy, the simple answer is, no, it was really not designed to pay your unfunded liability off, it was designed to smooth contributions. It put a premium on smoothing, and a, a backseat to paying the unfunded liability. The new policy moves the unfunded liability to the front seat, and says, that's our priority, and smoothing is now in the backseat. So, so for California public agencies, with maybe one notable exception, agencies will look at that, and they will look at question number two, is the contribution policy designed to pay that off? They'll come, they'll come to the conclusion very, very quickly, yes. Because they'll look at that graph, that I couldn't read any of the numbers, and they'll go, yeah, yeah, the unfunded liability is really coming down. They'll all, but, the first one, the first question, does the agency have the wherewithal to pay that off, to make the contributions? That will become more important. And so, I think for most agencies in the state, maybe a large majority, the answer will be, yeah, we think you're going to have the financial wherewithal to make those contributions. There, I have no doubt, there will be a small number of agencies in the state where the answer's no. And, and so you will possibly see additional bankruptcies, but for the vast majority of agencies, you will, when you look at where your, what you all have done, negotiating cost-sharing, you know, paying off the pension obligation bond over a relatively short period of time, all of those are kind of the right, get you, really get you into a place where I would be ver, I'm not a ratings guy, I'd be surprised if, if this was an issue for you folks. Now, now, outside of California, the answer is substantially different than that, because many, many other states don't have a contribution. You don't have, you know, you can go to Illinois, you can go to Chicago, read the newspaper, those, they're, what they're doing is, they're pushing off their contribution, they're not really stepping up to the plate. The rating agencies will, no doubt in my mind, will get excited about that. So, what we have on 39 and 40 is a list of options. I call it paying down the unfunded liability, but it's really two things, it's paying down the unfunded liability and mitigating rate volatility. So, very clearly, issuing a pension obligation bond is a arbitrage between what your debt service is, and what CalPERS will actually earn on that money. Not guaranteed. The other possibility, for some agencies, when they look at their unrestricted fund balance, they have the money, if you will, to take that, pay down the unfunded liability, and we encourage for any agency that does that, is to replenish reserves by sort of treating that like a loan, and paying that, paying those unrestricted reserves back. Third option is, you can go to CalPERS and say, thank you very much, we, we looked at the pay-down on the unfunded liability over 30 years, we'd like to amortize that over a shorter period of time. This is no different than, you know, home mortgage, paying your home mortgage off over 15 versus 30 years. Higher payments, so in the short run, you have significantly less budget flexibility, but when you get beyond that period of time, where the unfunded liability is paid down, you, you have much, much more budget flexi, flexibility. One-time payments, we have clients who are, you know, you get to the end of the year, and you go, oh, we have a million, just for sake of argument, a million-dollar budget surplus. What councils are thinking about doing is taking, having a contribution policy that would say, well, our reserves are a little low, so let's take a third of that million bucks, replenish reserves. We have one-time projects that we think need to be, you know, we need to do some sprucing up on a particular park, we don't have something set aside for that, so we're going to do a one-time project, you maybe take a third of that for one-time projects, and a third of it to pay down your unfunded liability. None of these get to rate mitigation or, or volatility. The next two on slide 40 do. And there really are two alternatives here. Alternative number one is, you set up an internal service fund, so you go back to that million dollars, and you go, okay, $350,000, let's put it in an internal service fund, and if the CalPERS rates go up, we'll take that 350, and we'll help mitigate our contribution volatility with that. There are two, in my mind, disadvantages to this particular approach. We have clients who are doing this. But there are two disadvantages. Disadvantage number one is, you're making about, I don't know, 50 basis points on the money that the city is investing. Maybe on a good day, you get to 70 basis points, and on a bad day, it's 25 basis points. A relatively low return for a fair amount of principal, that's number one. And number two, no disrespect to the council, but if you put it into an internal service fund, the council can use that money for other things. So, I'm sure current council wouldn't do that, but future councils might. So, you, you really don't end up with certainty, you put money into, into an internal service fund, it will not reduce your GASB 68 net pension liability. On the other hand, there is something relatively new, an irrevocable supplemental pension trust. These are the very first one in the state that was set up by Irvine Ranch Water District. I don't, I don't, I don't want to irritate any clients, but my experience is, is that water districts have a little more cash than cities do. So Irvine Ranch Water District had a large unfunded liability, they took money out of unrestricted reserves, paid that, paid off their entire unfunded liability, not by giving it to CalPERS, but by putting it into a 115 trust. They went They went to the IRS for a determination letter, set up their own trust. There are two entities that noticed that and are in the business of kind of marketing this, if you will. The folks at PARZ and PFM have a little more cost-effective method than going directly to the IRS. If you put money into these trusts, it can really be used for two things. It can be used to mitigate contribution volatility and I'll just, I'll just kind of give you my little caveat, I'm not, I'm not an auditor. I believe your outside auditors would say that those assets could be used to reduce your Gatsby 68 net pension liability. There are a variety of reasons why we think that particular approach works for agencies that have the cash to put into the trust. So that's really the, that's, those, by the way, have a tendency to be smaller agencies, agencies relatively close to you, Sausalito and Healdsburg, have had council resolutions to direct staff to set up or to seriously look at setting up trusts. I don't think either one has really moved money yet, but I, I have a high degree of confidence both of them will. And the primary reason they're doing it is rate volatility. Secondary reason is to pay down the unfunded liability. You should be aware, if you give the money directly to CalPERS, if your primary goal is to pay down the unfunded liability, I think you write those checks to CalPERS. The problem with that is you don't mitigate that volatility in the, in the investment mix. If you set up these trusts, no one should assume you will out-investment return, CalPERS. You, I don't want to tell you you will not, because it certainly is possible you will. I would not do it for that reason. I would do it for rate mitigation as the primary, primary reason. So that's my last slide. I could keep talking on this for a long time. Thank you very much for being patient.
I'm guessing we might have some questions or comments. Maybe I'm guessing wrong.
I, I will say that we are looking at a lot of these instruments. Debbie and I will be in conversations with the Long Term Finance Committee to bring back some, some suggestions. We've actually been approached by one of the vendors that was listed on this chart as well. So we, we are engaged in the second part of this conversation, which was, how do we manage the volatility and how do we manage the unfunded liability? So that's going to be future conversations that we're going to have, again, with the Long Term Financial Committee and ultimately with the entire council on those fronts.
Okay. Mr. Bartel, thank you very much. Lots of information and, yes, ma'am, question?
A couple.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bartel. It's nice to see you again. One of the things that I don't see in this report, that's extremely useful as we move forward, getting the information to the public, is an executive summary. And to your mind, a 41-page report on this level of detail may in fact be an executive summary, but I can assure you that you and perhaps one of my colleagues are the only...
Can I say it is? This is the executive summary.
Yeah. So break it down for me. Thank you.
Ms. Combs.
Thank you. You mentioned midway through that there was a slide, not part of the presentation, that you would be happy to show us, and I'm not positive what the context of that is.
So, oh, yeah.
Whenever someone says there's more information they'd be happy to show, I have to ask.
We have exhibits towards the back, which provide information, for example, and we don't really have it in the PowerPoint. I don't know whether it was part of the handout, probably, is this a handout?
So is it in our materials and we just, I mean, because I have read more than the presentation here.
So, so if, it should be in your material.
Okay.
So can I just point you to the slide?
Yes, please.
Without talking about it?
Yes, please.
So if you go to in your material...
Yes.
Slides, slide E3, for example, when we look at the funded ratio on an actuarial and market value basis, we show that for miscellaneous police safety and fire safety. What that shows is the, what they, the funded ratio that they were using to set your contribution, the actuarial versus the, what all, what is arguably the best description of the real unfunded or the market value basis. So that, that's really the, those were the slides I was referring to.
Thank you.
Mr. Wasaki.
Thank you, and I do appreciate the presentation and the executive summary that we did receive here. You know, this is such a tough topic because I do believe that we have a promise to keep for the dignified retirement for our employees, let's, and that goes organizational wide. I just, I'm really concerned about the assumption of a seven and a half percent return when that's based upon invest, stock market being at all-time high, real estate being at all-time high. To me, you look at the cyclical matter presented in this data, there's three boom times and two busts. You can see that in those charts. That means another bust is coming. And I don't want to be anything other than a skeptical accountant because we have to oversee this for, for the workforce. So I don't think it's easy. I thank you for, for the presentation, but I want to impart to my colleagues, the one thing I did get out of it was trust and verify with CalPERS. And I think our League of California Cities needs to take the lead on this, quite frankly. I don't believe we've been well-served by this agency, and just for us to think that we're going to get seven and a half percent is going to lead us down the same path. You may disagree, that's just where I'm coming from. I have a lot of investment advisors I deal with on my clients that say that's, that's how we got here, with that kind of assumption. So I'd love to be wrong, but I think we do need to engage the league, to engage CalPERS and the state legislature, because we're having an election today. Make no mistake about it, because we have no money in this county for roads. What is one of the reasons? It's because of this promise that we need to keep to our employees. So that's my soapbox.
All right. Thanks very much. I don't have any cards on this, so... Mr. Turev, please take the microphone.
I was, I was looking at this review of CalPERS Actuarial Valuation Report, and I'm looking at the pension plans for police and fire employees and, well, basically, we're just talking about an awful lot of things that I am not an expert on, but enough to know that I would like to ask all of us, when do we say enough? When do we disengage from all the computers and cell phones and electronic frequency devices for long enough that we can actually think for ourselves? Just the other day in Richmond, it made national news that it was suggested at city council, people were having great concerns about mind control impositions through frequencies. Well, this has been known for decades, and this is why they have all these machines and computers in the schools. And this is why we have smart people like you trying to figure stuff out that the bankers are somewhat involved in, and we're struggling and we're wondering what's going on. We got Bruce Jenner on the cover of a magazine while we got children that are being maimed around the world, while there's all sorts of terrible things going on. And if we were not subliminally, subphonically, frequency-induced into a stupor, we would realize that things today are worse than they were for King when he did his march, for Gandhi when he did his march, and for Cesar Chavez. Things are probably five times worse for us on so many levels than they were for them back then, and that we are in the most powerful state in the world, which is California. And the reason you're having this discussion is because we are flat-out slaves to usurist bankers and their lawyerly minions. By their fruits, they shall be known. And you are certainly weary to the bone about trying to figure out how to get out of this pickle and save a nickel. It is time, for I am Peter, and I am putting this forth, dismiss it from on high, it is time to start speaking and acting and preparing and fulfilling the 40-day general strike, which walks us into the promised land seen by Martin Luther King, spoken of for thousands of years, and to be who we really are, which are the children of Creator with the authority to be liberator. Otherwise, you'll be having meetings like this till it's coming out of your ears, and it seemingly already is. How many professionals do you need to do some basic math? You're dealing with the banker's wrath. They're the ones that are laughing all the way to the bank, and where law enforcement and firefighters have to ask for nickels from the feds, and they get the nickels back with all these strings attached. That game...
Thank you, Mr. Turev.
Need now stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't take advantage of me just because it's my first time. Given that the council has been sitting here for more than three hours, I'm going to declare a five-minute break, a hard five minutes to reset the room, and we'll be back then. Welcome, everyone, to the June 2, 2015 Meeting of the Santa Rosa City Council. Couple of quick announcements to make before we continue. Mayor John Sawyer is not with us tonight, so that leaves me playing the role of ringleader. This is my first time, so be kind and patient and gentle with me. I apologize in advance for any mistakes or omissions or gaffes or assorted screw-ups that I might commit during the next few hours. I just want to let you know that I do plan to have the council take a dinner break for about 20 minutes. That'll probably come after the first public comment session. We started at 1:30 today, so we need to have some sustenance to keep going. We have the roll call. Ms. City Clerk.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Mayor Sawyer. Councilmember Combs has stepped away from the dais.
Mr. City Manager, would you report on our study sessions?
We had two study sessions. The first one was on the Santa Rosa Violin Prevention Partnership. Staff was given some input. We'll try to incorporate in the input when we check into the next presentation. There was also a CalPERS actuarial evaluation report. We will be providing an executive summary of that report. And again, it's going to be the foundational part of, again, some conversations with the Long-Term Finance Committee and ultimately with the whole council.
Thank you. Item 6.1 is a proclamation for the Santa Rosa Symphony's Youth Orchestra. Mr. Silo, are you here? Thank you. Come on down. Please, come down. And Councilman Schwedhelm has this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the Santa Rosa Symphony Youth Orchestra was founded in 1959 as the Junior Symphony by a group of educators and prominent citizens who wanted to supplement the musical training by Santa Rosa schools. And whereas the mission of the Santa Rosa Symphony Education Department is continuing to transmit the profound legacy of classical music by offering two types of training programs, training for young musicians and music for our schools. And whereas over the last 56 years, the Santa Rosa Symphony Youth Orchestra has trained over 1,700 young musicians, and since 2005 has been under the direction of Dr. Richard -- how would you pronounce his last name?
Low Hyde.
Thank you very much. And whereas the youth orchestra is traveling on its first-ever tour to the Asian continent, taking a musical journey through China, performing in Beijing, Hangzhou, and Shanghai as young ambassadors representing the citizens of Santa Rosa. And whereas we congratulate the Santa Rosa Symphony Youth Orchestra as it celebrates this achievement with the Bon Voyage Concert at Yau Hall of Sonoma State University's Green Music Center on June 6, prior to the orchestra's landmark journey, which takes place from June 17 through June 26. Now therefore be it resolved that John Sawyer, Mayor of City of Santa Rosa, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby acknowledge Santa Rosa Symphony Youth Orchestra as a treasured local cultural institution that brings international prominence to the citizens and city of Santa Rosa. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So just a few comments. First of all, thank you for this proclamation. And we are extremely excited about representing the city of Santa Rosa will be heard loud and clear in a very beautiful way in the finest concert halls in China in a few short weeks. You should know that we are the only performing arts organization of a national stature that has the name Santa Rosa. And we performed in Carnegie Hall in 2002. We toured Europe in 2009, and now we're going to China. So we're all quite excited about it and proud to represent the city of Santa Rosa. And I'd like to introduce Sarah Woodfield, the incoming board president of the Santa Rosa Symphony.
Hello, and thank you also for honoring us with this recognition. We're very proud of what we're doing in music education and to bring classical music to the entire community. And glad to be appreciated. Thank you.
Congratulations. It sounds like an exciting trip.
Yeah. We'll be bringing 50 young musicians, five chaperones, three staff, and touring there for eight days. It'll be a life-changing, life-affirming experience for all of them.
I'm sure it will.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Item 6.2 is a presentation on the Neighborhood Revitalization Program Computer Literacy Project. And company.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Chris Corsi and city council members. I am Carmelita Howard, and I am here to present to you through our Economic Development and Housing Department's NRP program, our successful computer literacy project that was just completed. To present that will be Rafael Rivera, our community outreach specialist.
Thank you, Carmelita.
Well, good afternoon, Honorable Vice Mayor Corsi, and good afternoon, distinguishable members of the Santa Rosa City Council. Good afternoon, members of the public and guests. My name is Rafael Rivera, as Carmelita just mentioned. I am the community outreach specialist for the community for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and I'm here to briefly talk about the Computer Literacy Project. The Computer Literacy Project was made possible through a partnership between NRP, our IT Department, and the Community Action Partnership of Sonoma County. Earlier this year, we learned, NRP learned that there was a surplus of used computers in our IT department. We approached the IT department and suggested that many of these computers could be put in good use and in the hands of people who typically wouldn't be able to afford to purchase a computer software system, software program, computer program, I mean. We later approached the Community Action Partnership and discussed the idea of a computer literacy project for beginners from the NRP neighborhoods. We know that the Community Action Partnership does a lot of outreach to people in need, and they also have a wonderful computer program where they teach Excel and Word. The Computer Action Partnership was excited about this idea and decided to host a series of classes along with the partnership and NRP. So we did outreach in the NRP neighborhoods and received an overwhelming response from many of the participants. We ended up with registering up to 14 individuals, since the computer lab can only accommodate that amount. But we were very surprised to learn about the tremendous need in their community about computer use and access to technology and computer access. So the workshop outline covers specific topics such as common computer terms, starting and shutting the computer system, accessing and navigating the Internet through various browsers, an overview of the city of Santa Rosa website, how to pay a bill online, and also how to set up an email account. Upon completion of the four-day series of workshops, we had a small celebration. We presented certificates of appreciation and completion, and we also gave these 14 participants that use computers. For the participants, I must say that this was the very first time they had ever owned a computer system. I have now received emails from some of these participants. Our graduates are excited and now have been inquiring about an intermediate course. They chuckle and tell me how exciting it is to view their bank accounts online as well as paying other bills that are due, and they save the time and convenience of doing that from home. The mission of NRP is to improve the living conditions and quality of life in the neighborhood. We feel that through this computer literacy project, we have fulfilled the mission of our program. I would like to acknowledge and thank our IT department as well as the effort of the Community Action Partnership for their participation and commitment to this project. And with me this afternoon, I have a member from the Community Action Partnership who would like to say a couple of words, as well as one of the volunteers that helped us with conducting this series of classes and who also benefited by getting one of these computers.
Good afternoon. My name is Marlene Garcia. I'm the Assistant Director of the Community and Economic Development Department. And I just want to say that it was a great experience to partner with the city. This is definitely high need in the community. We have a lot of the Spanish-speaking population who come to community action and don't have any computer skills. There's a lot of programs, like I just said, the junior college, but unfortunately, all of these programs are in English. So we need more classes. We need to hopefully keep partnering with the city to keep offering this program because, like I said, there's a high need, not just basic computer skill classes, but also more advanced classes, like Rafael was saying, Pabbi Word, Excel, and maybe even PowerPoint and QuickBooks. Because I teach business classes for people that want to start their own business, and one of the major challenges is that they don't know how to use a computer to type the business plan and also to research about their business and apply for a business license online. This is a great program, so hopefully we're going to keep working together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Martha Solorio, and I'm one of the volunteers. This program's actually great because I suffered doing my Santa Rosa J.C. College homework on my phone, and without this class, I wouldn't be able to obtain a computer. So now I have a computer where I can do my homework on, thanks to this class and Santa Rosa City and the Community Action Partnership. So I just want to thank them.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes our presentation. I don't know if you have any questions?
This does sound like a great program. I'm glad to hear it's going, and I hope it continues. One suggestion is that you let the students that you teach to use these computers know how to reach their city council. One email gets it to all of us, and they can take part in their city government as well. And also, we may have more used computers than you can teach people to use, but if there's a way for individual residents of the city to contribute to this, let us know or let people know now.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
6.3 is another presentation from the Department of Housing and Urban Development on the Department of Housing and Urban Development High Performing Agency Award.
Okay, we are here again for another success from Economic Development and Housing. We are here to present our Housing Choice Voucher High Performing Award for the ninth year. Also here are our team, and who works hard every day to work the program with the kind of clientele we have and with the rental market the way it is now. So Rebecca Lane will present, give the presentation, and our award is right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Rebecca Lane, and I am pleased to be before you once again to present the High Performing Housing Agency Award. I'm joined by Steve Burke, the Chair of the Housing Authority Commission, as well as, Carmelita mentioned, several of the hard-working staff members who have brought this honor to Santa Rosa for the ninth year in a row. This community is currently engaged in a passionate dialogue about a housing crisis in Santa Rosa and Sonoma County. Those of us who work in this field have witnessed the struggles that low-income families often experience in the local rental market. The Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program we administer, which is the dominant form of federal rental assistance, is targeted to households with the fewest financial resources. By law, 75% of our vouchers are targeted to families at or below 30% of the area median income. In Santa Rosa, that's $23,050 for a family of four. The remaining vouchers may be issued only to families or individuals whose income does not exceed 50% of the area median income. By design, our program serves some of the most vulnerable households in our community. 73% of our participants are elderly or disabled, or both, with SSI or Social Security as their primary source of income. 29% of families on this program are working but not making enough money to pay market rent without assistance. Almost 50% of our households include children, for whom housing stability in good neighborhoods is perhaps the most essential. The National Low Income Housing Coalition recently released their annual housing report entitled "Out of Reach." The findings suggest that Santa Rosa renters need to have an annual income of $41,880 to afford the average one-bedroom apartment. That's 164% more than the average annual income of $15,840 for our average program participant. A housing voucher is not just a safety net; it is the only way that some people survive. While I am, as always, extremely proud of my team for the work that they do to help the roughly 1,900 families on our program, any celebrations of our success by HUD standards this year are muted by the challenges in our current environment. There is a rental vacancy rate in Santa Rosa of less than 2%, and market rents in many areas have increased beyond the limits of our program. This means that some families who are already in place are paying a greater percent of their income towards their rent, and families who are searching for housing are finding it increasingly difficult to do so. We are grateful for the cooperative relationships that we have with so many landlords and property managers in our community, and will continue to work tirelessly towards the goal of each and every voucher we have available in Santa Rosa being used to help create a safe, decent, happy home for our families. I want to thank the team of dedicated staff who work towards these goals, especially our technicians who work on the front line of our program, our manager and director, and the support staff who support all of us. This recognition would not be possible without them, nor without our partners in the finance and IT departments, nor the support of the Housing Authority Commissioners. Thank you, all of you, for the important work that you do, and congratulations on your award. It is well-deserved.
Thank you, and congratulations to the whole team. That's great, nine years in a row. Well done.
Can we ask the team members to stand up so we can recognize them?
Well done. 7.1 is on the Russian River Watershed Association Staff Briefing.
All right. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Corsi and members of the council. We're here today to give an overview of the Russian River Watershed Association. The city of Santa Rosa was one of the founding members of RRWA back in 2003, and we remain a member today. It's a great association that allows us to leverage resources to develop and participate in regional programs that both protect and improve the Russian River watershed. Currently, Councilmember Carlstrom is our representative on the Russian River Watershed Association Board of Directors, and she asked us to come here today to give an overview of the association and the current programs that we'll be implementing this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. I have with me here today Andy Rogers, who's the Executive Director of RRWA, and he's going to give the rest of the presentation.
My name is Andy Rogers, Executive Director of the Russian River Watershed Association. It's great to be here. I appreciate the invite from Councilmember Carlstrom because it's probably too rare that we actually get around and really tell all the good things that are happening at the RRWA. So just a really quick, you know, what we're talking about, the boundaries that we're concerned about, and what we focus on is the Russian River watershed. It includes, you know, the areas going up into Mendocino County, so Ukiah, and going up into basically the headwaters up in there and down through here through the Laguna and out to Jenner. So this is an association of all the municipalities within that region. Roughly 360,000 people live here, but it provides water for around 600,000 out of the watershed as well. There are endangered species that we're concerned about, and there's a lot of things in water, as you very well know. So the Russian River Watershed Association was formed in 2003, and it's basically a voluntary association. As you know, cities have a lot to do, and when there's cities next door, why not get together and see if we can pool resources, leverage the talent in each of the cities, and see what we can do together and do more for less, essentially? So here are my 11 bosses. So here are my 11 bosses. And so every year, we collaborate and develop work plans for a long list of projects, and it's about a six-month process while we do all our other active work. And so all of these are determinations by staff and our board, which is elected officials. So here's how it's, we're kind of set up in a structure. Our governance is the Board of Directors. Councilmember Carl Strum is your representative, and then we have the elected officials from the other 10 agencies on our board. We have five meetings a year, and we review pretty much, that's where the decisions get made, and the recommendations from staff are brought up to the board to make decisions. So we have a technical agency staff, which is, we call the Technical Working Group, and they have eight meetings a year, and that's where a lot of the work gets done and vetted. And then we have myself and two junior staff kind of helping me do this on very part-time basis, where we kind of keep the thing together. And then really, built into our work plans is a regulatory compliance element. So when we're accomplishing these projects, not only are we doing good things for our member agencies, but it's, there's checkboxes in the regulatory compliance world along the way. So our website is RRWatershed.org. You can't really see it on the slide, but the major programs that we have, it's kind of all things water. There's three main categories of stormwater, municipal wastewater, and water supply. And then we have a lot of programs that kind of go on that go year to year. And I'll point out, there's an interactive map that's part of this website where you can locate a lot of the locations that we, that I'll be talking about a bit, and you can interact through a Google Earth interface. So one of the programs that seems to be evolving and is getting a lot of news these days around the country now is the Safe Medicine Disposal Program. And so we work with the Sonoma County Water Agency, the City of San Rosa very closely, and all of our other member agencies. And we have 30, now 32 locations as of yesterday throughout the watershed. Again, this is both counties, and we all coordinate, so there is a place for free, unused, unwanted medicines. So it gets out of folks' medicine cabinets and disposed of properly, rather than into the sewer or into the landfill. Since inception in about 2007, 2008, we've collected over 80,000 pounds of medications. So picture that. Stormwater training. So this is a regulatory compliance requirement that we fulfill, but really, it's much, much more than that. This allows, we convene the agency staff to train on topics, whether it's LID or the latest best management practices that are coming up, and we provide certification opportunities. And so again, we're kind of taking, leveraging the expertise of the area and then sharing it amongst all the member agencies. City of San Rosa has a lot of talent on the staff, and so the member agencies get to interact with that, and so we get consistency in the region, which is really important. Environmental columns, you probably may have seen this in various papers all around, in both English and Spanish, every single month, and we basically facilitate these columns to be written by our member agency staff on different topics. We now have over nine years of monthly columns posted on our website, so it goes very, there's a lot of information on there, and so we're always be doing that. We do a video contest for the high schools that were in collaboration with the water agency. This is really fun. So we come up with a topic. The board selects a topic every year as a recommendation from the Technical Working Group, and then we have the contests, and they're judging, and there's a cash reward for the teachers and the program and the students. It's a lot of fun and very rewarding. And you will see some of these films at the, before movies, and the local theaters around, so it's a pretty big deal. So just a real quick, some of the highlights of the coming work plan year, which starts on July 1st. We're talking about, every agency has a requirement to monitor water quality in their jurisdictions. We're now talking about, well, let's make that maybe a regional thing. So maybe we're getting a more regional picture and possibly with using less resources. So we're talking about that. We're getting involved in the Homeless Task Force and the nexus of being the homeless encampments along creeks, because of the water quality concerns associated with that. We're going to continue our advocacy with our regulating agencies, watching bills at the Assembly and the Senate. We're going to be translating more and more of everything we do into Spanish. The website that you saw is going to look maybe a little bit nicer this year. We're going to update that. We're going to have a social media campaign to link with our member agencies. And most exciting is we're going to go get some grant money. That's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may just?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to thank Andy and Jennifer for bringing this forward to us. Over the last few years, I've had a pretty unique opportunity, I think, as a council member, to really dive into water, if you'll pardon a rough pun. And it, there, you know, about a month ago, I asked them to bring forward the staff report on the biological opinion, and now here's Russian River Watershed Association. It just made sense to me that, especially as we discussed changing in our water policy, that made, you know, made sense for more of the council to have a better idea of all the places that we are involved in the programs that we do fund. Andy, I wanted you to go back to the member agencies quickly, if you don't mind. It just, if memory serves, City of Ukiah and the county of Mendocino are relatively new to the association. Is that correct?
The city, or the county Mendocino is, the City of Ukiah is actually our administering agency. They've been very active since the beginning, and they've been really supportive, so. But yes, Mendocino's a new member.
Which is very exciting, because we are joining more of our regional partners in these conservation efforts.
That's correct.
Just wanted the council to be aware of that. Andy, for your edification, I have shown the council the videos in the past. Would love to be able to do that again. Maybe you can shoot them to me in a disc or to Jennifer.
Absolutely.
The council may remember the goldfish that almost ran out of water.
Yes.
A couple of years ago.
We just had the contest in April, so those are available.
Yes. And, oh, where are my mood pencils?
I was going to grab a handful, but they're all, we're all out currently. But we have mood pencils that are part of, one of the things that we do is we develop bulk purchase items for all our agencies, and so we can do large orders, and everybody pays less per unit. And mood pencils have been really popular giveaways at various educational events, and the board definitely is a fan, so. I will bring it whole set.
Thank you. But amongst those bulk purchase items are also things like Russian River-friendly landscaping and construction guidelines and things like that, and we have a number of those available up in the city manager's office. So thank you very much for coming down and talking with us. I appreciate sharing the knowledge.
Thank you for being a great board member.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the Quarterly Report on Capital Improvement Program Projects. Mr. Dittmer. Ms. Ferguson.
I'm calling Ferguson, Deputy Director of Capital Projects Engineering, and I need to make a couple comments before Mr. Dittmer presents the staff briefing. First, you'll notice that we're doing something different with the staff briefing this time. Instead of me talking about all the projects that the whole division's working on, we've got one supervising engineer talking, really focused on his team's projects. He'll review the expenditures for the whole division and then focus in on his team's project. So it's something new. We have four CIP teams that deliver the city's CIP projects. Teams one and four are multipurpose teams. Teams two and three focus on San Rosa water projects. So Steve Dittmer is the supervising engineer for Team One, and he'll be first up, and I'll be asking for your input at the end of this staff briefing. If you want to do anything different before the supervising engineer for Team Two comes up for the next one, I'll have, give you the opportunity to let me know. And the written communication that accompanies the staff briefing has not changed, so it's comprehensive, as it always has been. And then the second thing I wanted to mention is that the city recently received an award from the International Partnering Association for our San Rosa Avenue Widening Project. Partnering was really important to this project because it made it possible for us to work with the contractor team and construct the project in one construction season. We really didn't think that was a possibility when we put the project out to bid, but when we got together to talk partnering, they said, "We think we can do this in one year," and we all worked together and got that done. So it's great to be able to celebrate the partnering that happened on the project. This project was completed by CIP Team One under Mr. Dittmer's leadership, so it's fun to bring this award forward while he's doing the staff briefing. I was honored to represent the city at the award ceremony, so I'll pass around the award and the program from the award ceremony and a couple of photos, so you can share that experience. And I'll see if Steve can get, be successful bringing up our PowerPoint presentation.
Vice Mayor Corsi, members of council. This briefing will highlight some of the projects that will be under construction this year. But before I get into the individual projects, I'd like to give a brief expenditure summary overview. In the last quarter, we spent a total of about $9 million. About half of it has been local sewer and water, capital projects, as well as projects out at the Laguna Treatment Plant. The balance have been street and road projects, and city parks, and facilities projects. So one of our sewer and water projects is just east of the Montgomery Village area there. It's Frank Cat and Patio Court. Old and deteriorated sewer and water mains will be replaced, and the completed project will improve fire flow and reduce maintenance costs. This was awarded by BPU end of last month, and so it should be under construction soon. It's about a $1.3 million project. The map on this slide shows the locations that will receive a Slurry Seal this year. Slurry Seals restore the pavement's ability to prevent water intrusion, they correct minor cracking, and improve skid resistance. The priorities are established by our pavement management system and lab tests of the existing street sections. More information on the Slurry Seal program can be found at srcity.org/slurys seal. We opened bids on our Slurry Seal program also last month, and this should be to council in a couple of weeks for consideration of award. On Montecito Boulevard and St. Mary's Drive, we will be upgrading the existing pedestrian actuated flasher with a traffic signal due to the warrants for pedestrian, school pedestrian volume. The signal serves elementary, middle, and high school students, and there's quite a large volume of them, which initiated the upgrade. This was awarded by council last February and is about to go under construction. Actually says July on the slide, but we expect it to go under construction this month. We briefed the council a few times on the Stony Point Road project. Stony Point Road will be widened four lanes with bike lanes and sidewalk from Highway 12 to Hern Avenue. Construction is expected to begin this month on this $10 million project. Coming soon, we have another sewer and water replacement project to improve fire flow and reduce inflow and infiltration. The bid opening is expected at the end of this month, and that is also what represents about $1 million in construction costs. Our pavement preventative maintenance project applies micro-surfacing to city streets to restore the surface and extend the life of the pavement. The streets being resurfaced this year are Corby Avenue from the 101 ramp to Bellevue, Bennett Valley Road from Farmer's Lane to Yalupa, Montgomery Drive from Jackson Drive to Channel Drive, and Bicentennial Way from Range to Mendocino Avenue. We will also be replacing a streetlight wire that has been stolen from the system, and in addition to replacing that wire, the project will include installation of vandal-resistant pole boxes and replacement of high-pressure sodium fixtures with LED lights. The streets that this project will involve are the Fountain Grove Parkway from Stagecoach to Shenate, Thomas Lake Harris Drive from Fountain Grove to St. Andrews, and Occidental Road from Yonkers to Nicholas.
Excuse me, can you say when that one will start?
It'll be after the start of the fiscal year. We'll be, it'll be out to bid this month, and the construction will start after the Information regarding our CIP projects is available on our CIP website, and I'd like to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions? I have one or two.
Okay.
Could you explain the difference between Slurry Seal and preventative maintenance? The difference in the work and the cost for those two?
They're very similar, and similar costs. The Slurry Seals have a smaller aggregate, takes a little bit longer to set up with its emulsion, and we have, we put those in our residential streets. The micro-surfacing, we put on our arterials. It has a larger aggregate. It sets up quicker so that we can get traffic on it quicker.
Okay. And on the St. Mary's Drive signal, will that be operational at the beginning of the school year? Is that the expectation?
We expect so, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks very much.
If council has any input on this different approach to the quarterly staff briefing, I'd love to hear it now or any time between now and the next one. Otherwise, if this worked well for you, the supervising engineer for Team Two will be up in a few months.
One question that I would have is, by doing it team by team, is what are we missing? Is there any, are there any big projects getting ready to start out there that we're not hearing about?
I will make sure that if there are big projects that you should know about, that I think you should know about, that we'll include that in the staff briefing, even if it's focused on one team. If there's bigger projects, we'll make sure they're mentioned as well.
Great.
What's a big project?
What's that?
What's your definition of a big project?
I don't know.
Think about it.
Stony Point Road widening is a big project.
It could be big in the terms of dollars. It could be big in the terms of visibility. It could be big in the terms of just the number of people it affects.
Right.
I will always ask you every time about the involvement of the Community Advisory Board with capital improvement projects, so you may as well kind of let me know just in advance, maybe as part of the presentation, which projects you've discussed with the Community Advisory Board that are being presented and which ones aren't.
Appreciate that comment. And I know we're actively in conversations about how to better engage with the Cav on the CIP. Yeah.
All right. Thank you both. Approval of minutes. 8.1 is from the May 12th meeting. We have any permissions, corrections? Ask for your votes on that.
Just saying, seeing none, we accept.
Oh, seeing none, we accept. Thanks for the help.
Sure.
And May 19? We'll accept those as well. Do we have any statements of abstention tonight? All right, 9.2.1, council subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittees the past couple of weeks?
I went, I attended an A-BAG Regional Planning Subcommittee on Economics. Does that count? Shall I just go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay, I attended the A-BAG Regional Planning Subcommittee on Economic Strategy. And they, this subcommittee is developing a document that will be put into a larger A-BAG report that will become part of Plan Bay Area. So between now and August is a good time for us to have input. I will share it with you and with staff. Some of the findings coming out, one that I thought was particularly interesting was that for the Bay Area, six counties had median household incomes at or below the 1989 levels. But three counties, Contra Costa, Solano, and Sonoma, had inflation-adjusted median incomes at 1979 levels. And the trends are considered magnified for the very low and low-income households. The, the draft economic strategies, as in the report, are to ensure balanced land use pattern with space for all activities that contribute to a regional economy and facilitate goods movement. Most of the list I'm about to read are sort of mother and apple pie. And the next phase, when we get to the specifics of how we will implement those, it may be where some of the less consensus may be seen on the, on the A-BAG group. Oh, shoot, it just closed. Where'd it go? I'm sorry, my document just closed. Let me open it again. The drawback of not having a hard copy. The subcategories of that are integrated employment activities with the PDAs, Plan Development Areas, to encourage more employment growth around transit. Evaluate priority industrial areas. Update industrial zoning and permitting processes as needed to support business expansion and attraction of key industries, including advanced manufacturing. Identify policies and funding to meet the housing needs of the Bay Area residents and workers. Item number two generally is identify opportunities and specific public actions to support a healthy business climate and growth in jobs. Addressing state-level barriers to economic growth. Focusing on economic development efforts on sectors where the Bay Area has a competitive advantage, including focusing more on supporting the retention and growth of new and existing businesses rather than pulling businesses from other regions. Ensure local regulation and permitting processes support retention and expansion of local business. Provide economic development assistance to local jurisdictions by sharing best practices, developing tools, pipeline projects, and data. Establish standards to ensure that the investment of public dollars supports greater economic opportunity. Explore using social and economic impact assessments as part of major planning and policymaking. Locating public facilities near transit, like colleges and universities. Item three, prioritize investments to address the growing strains on the traditional 21st century infrastructure. I'm going to skip those. And there's some key ones there, because there's an emphasis on maintenance of existing infrastructure, which sometimes means that we end up not getting transit dollars because they're used to maintain and similar big-city programs. So one of the ways that I've been providing input is just to keep saying we need to be part of the granting process, whether or not we have as high a density as some of the other areas. Improve the alignment between workforce skills and business needs. Enhance the quality of K through 12 education to meet the changing needs of people in business. Reform California's higher education system to generate a globally competitive workforce. Provide greater economic mobility to low- and moderate-wage workers. And promote economic growth with an emphasis on middle-wage jobs, including focusing economic development efforts on supporting industries of opportunity that provide a larger-than-average share of middle-wage jobs. So that's sort of what the committee is moving forward on. And I haven't typically gone into this kind of detail on that committee, but because these are going into the plan that will eventually affect our funding, I thought we might want to have more input into what's going on with that committee. In addition, I've also attended at least three events with community action partners, including a small business conference, which was a lot of fun, and CAP did a great job with that. Met five new businesses that have started up because of CAP funding for entrepreneurs. And I think I'll just be quiet, because I already took up enough time.
Thank you. Let's just go down the line, Councilman Schwedhelm.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, it's busy. It seems like every week we don't have a council meeting that gets filled with plenty of other community events. I do want to share a couple that I attended. Went to the final great graduation at Lincoln Elementary, the day after the last council meeting. And it was very significant in that this past year, the Police Department and the DA's office, we accepted another about 660 graduates into the partnership. So it's an evidence-based program that our Police Department's been doing an awesome job, and the DA's office participating on. But that number, 660 kids, have that positive interaction. So that was very great, attending that final one for the year. Just say, went to the Family Fun Fiesta at Cook, but since at least one other council member had more fun than I did, I'll let her talk about that. Also attended with the City Manager and Councilmember Oliveras, Dr. Chong's, SRJC, Dr. Chong's president message to the community, which again was great, hearing all the things that the junior college is doing and what a great asset it is to our community. I attended the Lucien presentation on the 29th as a panel member. And again, the focus of that discussion was education and the Local Control Accountability Plan, and how it does intersect with our scorecard that we spoke of earlier today. So it was a very rich discussion. And lastly, yesterday spent most of the day with Roseland University Prep at their Portfolio Day. And I'd really encourage any other council member or other community members, if you're interested in doing that next year, it's really a rewarding experience, seeing the future leaders coming out of Roseland University Prep. Very rewarding day. Thank you.
Councilman Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Subcommittees have been light for me, but I wanted to share an interesting experience I had a couple of weeks ago. I had the opportunity to travel to Richmond, Virginia for a conference. And one of the panels was a focus on income inequality in that community. And it was fascinating, although potentially not as surprising as it was to discover that communities all over the country are facing exactly the same challenges we are here in Santa Rosa. One of the things that they're focusing on in Richmond in order to combat income inequality in a very holistic way is to take a look at their transportation system and revision it. They are going to be establishing a living wage in Richmond. They are obviously focusing on mixed, what they call, public housing, which we would call affordable housing. But they're also looking at, their city council has taken a very direct approach with their education system. They have a very low rate of graduation. And so what they've done is to look at both preschool and early childhood education, funding it through the city's revenues as well as after-school programming. They've also committed $420,000 out of their general fund budget for what they call a promised scholarship. They will, if you graduate from one of their high schools, they will help you go to a secondary or college, which I just thought was really, really interesting for a community in the South to take that progressive of a stance. A quick congratulatory note to our colleague from Petaluma, Gabe Kearney, a couple of weekends ago, was elected the President of the California Young Democrats. So very, very proud of him down there in Petaluma. And then, yes, I was apparently the, one of the star participants in the Dunk Tank at Community Actions, Sonoma County, right? At Cook Middle School, their Family Fun Fiesta last week. I was in the Dunk Tank, and I think I hit the pool probably 11 or 12 times. And there were some motivated pitchers out there, including one member of our Police Department, and I'm just going to leave it at that. A lot of fun. Hopefully, we helped raise some money. Councilmember Combs, I'm sure, will also add to that. But great event.
Councilmember Schwedhelm and I had the good fortune of selling the balls that people threw at the Dunk Tank.
Councilman Oliveras? Councilman Wysocki?
Yes, just one event. Attended the Sonoma County Agricultural Prevention Preservation and Open Space District Advisory Committee. It was a, an event held on the north slope of the Sonoma Mountain Trail, which if you have not been there, is a phenomenal spot. It links to Jack London Park, and there are plans to link it to Annadale through Cooper's Grove. So it's, it will be a gem when that does happen. They already own quite a bit of the, of the land. Lastly, I would also request that we consider a matter. I've been getting a lot of communications on vacation rentals. Airbnb is starting to affect a lot of our community. So I'd like us to consider this for a future agenda item.
Second?
Concerning how it's affecting our neighborhoods. Thank you for, thank you for that second.
And I had a couple of chances to stand in for the mayor in the past week. As he's been gone, kicked off a class for parents with the Violence Prevention Partnership that followed the Fiesta at Cook Middle School last week. Delivered this council's proclamation to Community Action Partnership of Sonoma County on their 48th birthday. And, let's see. Today, I went out and voted for Measure A, and if you haven't done so, the polls are still open. Item 9.3.1 is a request for an agenda item regarding a protocol for the election of the mayor. This was brought up by me at a previous meeting. And it stems from the situation that we found ourselves in in December, when a new council was seated and there was no incumbent mayor or vice mayor to run that meeting. We talked about it at the time, that it would be nice to have a protocol in place. I don't expect that this is going to happen very often, but it has happened at least once in the last six or seven months. So my suggestion is that we, we do establish a protocol for that. I don't know if you need specific direction on what that protocol may be. The one we used was drawing names from a hat. Another suggestion was to do it the way that we do with appointees to boards and commissions that the council selects. I don't personally have a preference. Maybe some others do.
So we can bring back some suggestions under the council procedure manual for you if there's four votes that you would like staff to move forward with that.
So I'd second the motion.
Any other discussion questions?
Just for discussion, just as we're prioritizing these, because I know we have a lot of assets of staff, since we know that probably won't be the situation two years from now, that this, you know, I would like to address this, but on the priority list, a little bit lower than maybe some of the other items that we've been talking about.
It's certainly not an immediate concern. So, yeah, I would be, I'm fine with that kind of flexibility.
I would also be in support of having this be considered. Agreed, it's not a high priority, but it should be a quickie. And I would like to not have pulling names out of the hat be one of the considered methods.
Any further discussion? We'll have, call for the vote here? We have six eyes.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, did you want to take public comment before you move on to your next discussion item, since we're past 5:30?
Let's do the next one, and then we'll go to public comment. 9.3.2. This is a request for an agenda item regarding housing, housing discrimination ordinance. Ms. Combs?
Thank you, yes. I'm asking that we have a conversation, possibly in the near future, about an ordinance to ban discrimination against persons like vets who use Vosh vouchers and persons who use Section 8 HUD vouchers who are seeking housing. And I provided in your packet a letter from an organization that did a quick survey. They looked at 30, they basically checked 30 available units being advertised now that were at, at or below the median rate of $1,500 a month. And they called them. And of the 30, only three said yes to Section 8. 67% said no to Section 8. And a couple of them even had in their ad that they would not take Section 8. And 23% would not reply. So the, the data that we have, which is minimal right now, but it's a sample, would indicate that at least 2/3 of our available rentals at a $1,500 rate or less are in fact discriminating against people who are using Vosh or HUD vouchers. And I just think that we should take an action on this. So I'm hoping that you will move forward, having a discussion.
Go ahead.
I second the, the motion. I think it's very worthy of a discussion.
We've got a couple of cards on this. Linda Adrian? Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Debbie, and I'm speaking for seniors and disabled people who make a very low income. I will not, I will need HUD to pay my rent in four years. I make $490 a month. I'm going through divorce of a 35-year marriage. With the sale of our home, we split the money, and I bought myself a very nice mobile home in a mobile home park on Santa Rosa Avenue, the Lamp lighter, on March 25. The rules, when I moved in, said nothing about they don't accept HUD. And speaking with the manager, she didn't say anything either, either way. Because I told her, and I would be eligible. So the other day, I was speaking with the new manager and just mentioning that in four years, I would be eligible for HUD. And she said, "They don't take it." And I said, "Well, that's not what happened." You know, the, the park rules don't say anything about not taking it. So I called my attorney, and she told me to talk to Julie Combs. And she asked me if I would come here. So what it comes down to is in four years, they can kick me out of my home that I'll have lived in for five years. I'll be 60 years old, disabled both mentally and physically. $490 won't buy me a motel. Remember, there was nothing mentioned in the rules when I moved in. I also found out that there's two other households in that park that are on HUD. So for some reason, they're discriminating against me. So I'm very afraid of what could happen to me. The manager yesterday told me that they do take HUD. I'm told yes, I'm told no, and I'm extremely confused and concerned for my future.
Thank you. Ms. Adrian? Go ahead.
Hi, Linda Adrian here. As you all know, I'm pretty active in the manufactured home park area. And what I did when I found out about this situation, I contacted a lot of the different mobile home parks and manufactured home parks in Santa Rosa. And I found that almost all of them don't take HUD anymore when they used to. My park used to take HUD, and they don't anymore. In talking to the managers... In talking to the managers, couple of, one of the comments I got that I think I'd like to repeat here is this particular manager said, well, those kind of people have their own houses, has special apartments that they can rent. And I don't know if that's, you know, I was kind of set, I was surprised at that comment. All the managers were not that way, but all I know is most of the mobile home parks do not take HUD anymore. And I know that's a very, a problem, because I've known several people that tried to get on HUD, and they could not, and wanted to be able to live in a manufactured home, because there's a whole manufactured, rentals in manufactured home parks are much cheaper and less than apartments are these days. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Well, as I had made the motion initially, I had included only basic rentals. Can we include manufactured home park lots as part of this? Just make sure it covers both as, when it comes forward?
Yes, when we bring back the information, it can include both.
Thank you.
We've just heard that our city is an award-winning administrator of this program. The federal government thinks we're doing a great job. It would be nice if the rental community could also do a great job with it. Sounds like there needs to be some education as well. I'd be in favor of finding out what we can do here. Have your votes. That's six eyes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move to the first public comment session. Have one card.
Peter Chernoff, Cactus Pete, often bitter, sometimes sweet. Thank you. Quick, a couple lines from DC. Champion for Freedom, Rand Paul. Where's the support? While $3.5 million from Dennis Hastert to hide a verifiable organized pedophilia report. This nation's in big trouble, and that's a fact, between NDAA, martial law, and the Patriot Act. Most all bar association lawyers playing their Republican and/or Democrat roles. Most all in service to their usurious bankers, masters, and agenda genocidal goals. Where be the support for Dr. Paul? Do tell, do tell. I think he's looking to heal Philadelphia's cracked Liberty Bell. Meanwhile, let's look at Dennis Hastert's affiliations, his proclivities, and famous associations. Google your noodle to Dennis Hastert, Greg Bussaroni. For Hastert be a first-rate liar, yes, full of baloney. Bussaroni verifies his connections to Philly's Ed Savitz, and from Senator John DeCamp's book, pedophile pimp Larry King. The rabbit hole goes deeper. Will Dennis ever sing? And by their knowing omission, all mainstream media be thereby complicit in organized pedophilia. Hastert's connections verifiably include Jerry Sandusky and the vast ongoing Penn State MKUltra international child exploitation operations, absolutely connected to the Bush regime. Meanwhile, Bill Clinton's association to a billionaire pedophile pimp, as briefly noted in the media, the same media that disregards the fact that law enforcement has evidenced this association going back to the early '80s, curiously disregarded by Hillary as well. So let me change gears to high gears with a great invocation. From the point of light within the mind of God, let light stream forth into the minds of men. Let light descend on earth. From the point of love within the heart of God, let love stream forth into the hearts of men. May Christ return to earth. From the center where the will of God is known, let purpose guide the little wills of men, the purpose which the masters know and serve, from the center which we call the race of men. Let the plan of love and light work out, for may it seal the door where evil dwells. Let light and love and power restore the promised plan on earth. Requiring the power in your heart released, a spiritual birth. Choose wisely your master, thereby averting disaster. The power of Christ resides in each heart for sure, awaiting as an almighty lion silently screaming to roar. The time be upon us to disengage the system in support of pure love, united as an almighty piston with faith from above. I am Peter, and I am the one who shared that with you, and thank you for blessing me with some of you.
I had previously announced that we would take a dinner break after the public comment session. This has gone a little faster than I thought it would, though. I'm suggesting that we keep going, see where we are. Consent. Mr. McGlin.
City manager and city attorney's report. Not that, not that we have anything to report.
That too.
The only thing I would say that I attended an event that I think a couple, a council member was at, but a lot of my staff was at, involving the Roseland area high school, the charter schools, their portfolio review day. It was a really fabulous opportunity for me to get to meet and get a presentation from some really articulate young people who are going to make a real impact in our community in the next few years. And I was just blown away by their portfolio presentations, as I know my entire team was.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you.
Consent. 11.1, motion, contract extension janitorial services. 11.2, resolution, assessment lien against the real property located at 2527 Iroquois Street. 11.3, resolution, change the Santa Rosa City bus fare policy as adopted in the short-range transit plan 2012 to 2021 to extend transfer time and use.
Any questions? I would, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just quickly, with respect to item 11.1, the janitorial services contract, how frequently do those contracts go back out?
So this particular contract was originally awarded for a four-year period, or a one-year period with four one-year extensions. So we're in the extension period now. We've had two of those. This would be the third. We could go one more, or we could go out for an RFP. What they're asking for here is, based on some law changes, there's been some increases. So we do look at going out at least every five years.
Thank you.
And on the second part of that contract, from July 2015 to December 2015, the 12.25% increase, is that the law changes that you're talking about?
That one is tied to the change in the California minimum wage law.
It's going to change it that much? Just that, just the minimum wage?
Yes, that particular one. So there are actually three different laws that have been passed during the term of this contract. There would be the Affordable Care Act, the paid sick leave law, which is effective this July, and the new California minimum wage. That's the one that's effective January. That's the big cost driver.
Good, thank you. On item 11.2, I just wondered if the property owner is in the house? Ms. Garstrow?
Thank you. I'll move items 11.1, 2, and 3, and wait for the reading.
A second. We have six eyes. Item 13.1, ADA paratransit services contract.
Report, ADA paratransit services contract award. Jody Frost, administrative services officer, presenting.
I am Jody Frost, but I'm not giving the presentation this evening. I am turning that over to Matthew Wilcox, who is our newest transit planner. He'll be managing this contract.
Hello, all. And I am Matthew Wilcox, and let's get started.
Welcome, Mr. Wilcox.
So currently, we provide ADA service for the city of Santa Rosa and deviated fixed route service to the community of Oakmont. The agreement with the current contractor expires June 30th of this year, and RFP was issued for, to find a new contractor for, to provide the ADA service and the Oakmont service beginning July 1st. We received two proposals, one from MV Transportation and, who we selected, and the contract term will begin July 1st and end on June 30th, 2017. Both federal and state funds are available to pay for this service. This new contract will include enhancements to MV scheduling and dispatch software, as well as an improved phone system to manage calls coming in. The contract contains clearly defined performance standards, which will help promote the most efficient, effective use of resources. The contract also allows for incentives when performance standards are exceeded, which should further encourage service provided to go above, beyond what is expected. It is our recommendation that you approve the award of a three-year professional service contract to MV Transportation and delivery of ADA paratransit service and deviated fixed route service to Oakmont in the amount of $3,728,046. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them right now.
Counsel? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. From a global perspective, why do we not provide ADA transit within and through Santa Rosa City Bus? Or, excuse me, paratransit?
Okay. I think one of the major reasons is the level of expertise that providing paratransit service takes. We could employ staff to do that, but contractors like MV have been doing this much longer than we have, and they can bring in those staff members that are, they attract staff members better than we could potentially. Dispatching paratransit service is very nuanced, and the fact that they've been in the industry for so long allows them to do this much more effectively than we potentially could.
Okay, thank you. Do you know the drivers for MV? Are they organized? By whom are they represented?
I would defer to Peter Edwards, who's the, or MV representative.
My name is Peter Edwards. I'm the general manager for MV Transportation.
If you'll lift up that microphone just a little bit, please. Thanks.
And to answer your question, yes, the drivers are covered by the Teamsters local here, 665.
Thank you. And while we have you, where is your company based?
We originally were established in Fairfield, California. We just recently moved our headquarters to Dallas, Texas.
Following up on that, my recollection, I was the staff member, the council member who was in the process, the RFP process. My recollection was that one of our requirements was that there be someone local, and that it be locally based. Can you say where you are locally?
Yes, we are located at 3250 Dutton Avenue here in Santa Rosa, and that's where my office is, and that's where I'm based.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Wysocki?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As this is a city provides service, when a complaint comes against this company, how does the city interact with this complaint to ensure that it's handled? To ensure that it's handled?
Generally, when complaints come in, MV takes note of it, and they put it into their system.
That's correct.
And then it's also brought to our attention. Depending on the nature of the complaint, myself or one of the other staff members will contact the individual to try and find some sort of resolution. But the general practice is that we are brought immediate attention if a complaint is made towards MV or the service that they're providing in regards to the service they provide for us.
And do you have oversight over MV to make, to ensure that you're satisfied, that the complaint has been addressed properly?
That is correct. We kind of, we work hand in hand with them to find a solution to any issues that are brought up because, and get further details on it, because they get the call directly, and we also make the time to contact the individual ourselves and get both stories, and in most cases, they align.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Ms. Combs, you have this?
Resolution of the council, the city of Santa Rosa, approving a professional services agreement with MV Transportation Incorporated to provide ADA paratransit service and a deviated fixed route service in the Oakmont community, and wait for the reading of the text.
Second.
Your votes? We have six eyes. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you.
Item 13.2, report, utility certificate for Wright Charter School located at 4389 Price Avenue, file number UC15-001. Eric Gage, city planner, presenting.
Vice Mayor Commissioners, the project for you is located at 4389 Price Avenue. It's a Wright School utility certificate. The utility certificate is to allow extension of city water services to fire suppression, to provide fire suppression at Wright Charter School, which is outside of the city limits but within the urban growth boundary. Here's an aerial photo of the general area. South Wright Road appears on the right side. Price Avenue follows to the school located here. You'll notice that the pink line represents the current jurisdictional boundary of the city. To the west is the unincorporated county area. Better to find here, the city boundary is indicated by the yellow line. The ultimate urban growth boundary is indicated by the blue line, which extends to Highway 12 and also to Merced Ave. Campus has been in operation as a school for many decades, since approximately the 1950s. In 1983, an agreement for sewer service between county and city was established. On January 13th, 2015, the application for a utility certificate to extend the water service was submitted. The existing utility agreement only covers sewer service. It doesn't make provisions for water service. And Council Policy 300-02 requires city council approval for utility certificates not contemplated by that policy. The approval of the utility certificate would provide reliable emergency water supply for fire protection and alleviate a public safety hazard. Engineering Development Services also provided standard conditions for the utility certificate. Those were inadvertently omitted from the resolution, but it has since been revised and updated, and staff recommends approval with and updated, and staff recommends approval with the resolution as amended. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions, Counsel?
I got a question for you. This is on attachment 6, the project description. I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So the very last sentence says, "The need for an extension of the City of Santa Rosa Water Main is to provide fire protection to both proposed and existing buildings." Then the last sentence is, I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, "Currently, the existing buildings have no fire protection whatsoever." This is an existing school with no fire protection whatsoever. Is that what I'm reading there?
That is the project description provided by the applicant's agent, and I understand that they are currently on well water and that the water they obtain comes from those wells.
It's not for us, I know it's not in the city, but it seems rather odd to me that there's no fire protection in this school that's been in existence since the 80s.
I did understand that the project applicant's agent, Rick Carlyle, would be in attendance today, and perhaps he can provide additional detail on the project.
There's some -- Sure. Take the microphone, please. Let us know who you are, please.
Hi, I'm Adam Stein. I'm the superintendent of the Wright School District.
Welcome.
Hi, Eric. Nice to see you, not through email, I know you are. To answer your question, yes, and for the last three years, I've been trying to work with the county to provide water to a fire hydrant for the site. We do have a well, which is not enough to provide fire suppression should we need it. And due to this project, we're about to embark on building a new multipurpose room, we are required to put in this water line. So that brings us here.
Thank you. Ms. Combs.
Well, it sounds urgent. My question, though, is, as with whenever we provide service to something within the urban growth boundary but in the county, I would like you to explain why we are not discussing annexation? Because it seems to me that if we're extending water services, we should be talking about annexation.
One of the standard conditions of every utility certificate is the requirement for an annexation agreement, and that agreement essentially is an agreement to annex and to not protest an annexation, at which time the city embarks on that step.
I certainly wouldn't want to hold the project up for annexation because it sounds urgent, but it concerns me to have the extension. So we would be signing in the agreement that they would not protest an annexation.
So that's Exhibit A, Roman numeral 1 to the resolution?
That's only for this property, though, and not for the area around it.
It is primary -- the project is to serve primarily this property. There are -- the main will also have public hydrants on it.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have one question. This water is only for fire suppression? It can't be used in any other way?
The main will not provide domestic water service to any faucets on the facility. It will be an extension of the water main from the corner of Wright down Price. There will be two public hydrants on that route, and then it will terminate providing fire sprinkler service to a multipurpose structure on the campus, but it will not provide domestic water service to anyone.
439, file number UC-15-001. Way further reading the text.
Second. Your votes? That's six eyes.
A Place to Play Park Master Plan Amendment to add a dog park and remote control car track. Lisa Grant, Park Superintendent, presenting.
May it take me just a moment to get this set up. Where is my mouse? Okay. That's right. There it is. No, that's their project. Yeah. And near this one. Yes. Okay, now we're ready. Good evening, I'm Lisa Grant, Park Superintendent. I'm here this evening to share with you a proposal to amend the master plan for A Place to Play. Shown on the screen is our current master plan. It was approved in 1997. This is an 83-acre site on West Third Street. The entire site is irrigated with reclaimed water. You see here a plan that shows soccer fields, ball fields, and some court areas, and a natural pond with a nature area and walking path around it. To date, or maybe I should back up just a little bit, the park has been developed over phases, with the first phase opening in 2003. To date, what you're looking at is an aerial picture of the assets that are currently built out, and this has been over a couple of phases. We have a senior ball diamond and a little league ball diamond, six soccer fields, and the parking lot concession stand. Concession stand is in this central area right there with a restroom building, and the pond with the trail in connections to the Sonoma County Water Agency Trail area also. This aerial also highlights a few assets that have been added since the last phase, and that would be a dog park that's on the north edge. Portions of the park, that dog park, were completed and built by a Boy Scout. And also shown is an RC, a remote control car track, that's located down towards the West Third Street, right in here. So these last two features of the park, the dog park and the remote control track, are not on the map that we first presented to you. And over the last, you know, initially, when the dog park was built, we had a few people, and over the last couple of years, it's become much more popular and used by the surrounding neighbors and others. And what we didn't foresee in placing the dog park there was that the noise is traveling across the creek to the homes on the other side. This last summer, we did receive several concerns and complaints from those neighbors and recommendations to relocate the dog park. So that's opened this opportunity for us to do just that and amend the master plan and kind of bring it up to current, representing what is in the actual park. After staff studied the different opportunities in the park and had meetings with dog park participants, learning what makes a good dog park, what their interests were, we presented, staff presented to the Board of Community Service, an option to relocate the dog park. We actually looked at several options, and the ideal location would be to relocate the dog park into the central area, where it's close to the, one of the main entrances in the parking lot. Along this edge, we would be able to provide shade, which was an interest, and potable water. As I mentioned, the site has reclaimed water, and there are very few locations that we actually have potable water. So I'm going to move forward again and zoom in on that area. So this is showing the proposal of the master plan. It would, if we were to build it out as planned, there was a little league field at this location, so that's a future asset that we would be supplanting with the fenced dog park area. The other, let me, this picture actually shows the current condition, the site itself. It was taken before the weeds, the annual grasses were mowed down. You see in the background, the community or the little concession building and restroom buildings, that's close to where the potable water is. You see the trees that are about 35 feet tall now, providing some shade from the west sun. And the houses are actually at the furthest distance. This is the location in the park where the next closest house is at the furthest distance. The other feature of the park, if you remember, was the remote controlled car track. Going back to our main master plan, that controlled master, remote controlled car track, we're proposing to actually move it just a little further north, and this was a desire of the members that utilized the car track, to move it to this location where it's closer to a connection of recycled water, where they do have permission and proper training to use the recycled water to occasionally dampen the area. They are very conscious of droughts and aren't using it. It's, you know, they've been restricted also. So this is the proposal that they would actually like to see on the future master plan amendment, and I'm going to zoom in here to show the features just a little better. Once again, there's parking on these entry driveways that make it very close and accessible, and we would be able to construct these, both the dog park and this remote controlled track, with accessibility features. This next slide shows the actual site, and my apologies, it is a little bit hard to really get an idea of where this is, but it's open land right now. It's not developed, and the track would supplant a future basketball court at this location if it were to, you know, go forward. So the Recreation and Parks Department is recommending an amended master plan that shows the current assets as they're being utilized in the park, with a relocated dog park to the central area by the concession stand restroom building and potable water, and the RC track moved into the location at the corner of the west parking entrance. That is my presentation, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Wasaki.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. The reason why the park hasn't been fully developed, is it because of lack of funds or lack of water? Or both?
It's lack of funding.
Okay. So basically, if we accept this recommendation, we're going to lose in the master plan a ball field, baseball field, and a basketball court?
Correct. One little league field, one basketball court. There are opportunities to amend the master plan in the future. Adjacent to the ball, to the dog park is proposed shuffleboard and bocce courts, so we'll have to see in the future.
But the basketball court will go away?
That is correct.
Why is it in there in the first place? Do we feel it, I just have a problem with not replacing. I can see if we're losing, you know, we had four or five ball fields. Losing one's not a real big deal, but no basketball at all, that's un-American.
I think at the time, in the late 90s, the remote control car track wasn't a voice that was heard. It is a family-friendly sport that, or hobby that is very popular, actually, and the members who utilize this area, they're very active in keeping it clean and maintaining their course and participating in, you know, little park maintenance around that area.
I'm sure they are, but they're not moving for any reason just to be closer to the potable waters. Is that the reason why they're getting relocated from where they're at?
Yes, it's a preferred location, and it would retain the skate park, which is a desirable feature for many youth.
What other parks close by? I can think of Finley that has a basketball court.
Youth Community Park has a basketball court.
Oh, do they? Okay.
Yes, they do.
How many do they have?
At least two, if not four.
Okay.
What's the proximity of that park to this park?
Half mile, right up Fulton.
I know, it's quite a distance. I mean, it's not a neighborhood park. It's south of there, it's north of the town, right? Youth Community Park? What are you talking about? The --
I said Youth Community Park, and I misspoke because I meant southwest.
Okay, okay.
Because youth doesn't, I'm going youth. I just like, I must have misspoken, I'm sorry.
That's north of the town, yeah.
It's Southwest Community Park, and they do have a basketball court.
But the councilman asked, how far away is it? So it's about four or five miles? Is it not?
As the crow flies, it's probably less than that. It's just on the other side of Highway 12 down Santa Rosa Avenue. This is just on the north side of Highway 12, but up on the Fulton side, so it's kind of between the Fulton and Santa Rosa Avenue. I mean, that's the corridor we're looking at.
Right, it just, I mean, yeah.
Finley Park has basketball court also.
Right, but again, that one is not exactly in close proximity as far as a neighborhood. Don't we have other neighborhood parks in the area? Do they have any basketball courts around there? Around the Darla areas?
Yeah, there's a neighborhood park there, and offhand, I don't remember, I don't believe it has a half court, and there's one by the school that has a schoolyard just right down on Third Street. My apologies, I'm blanking on the name. Jay, is that J X Wilson? It's a park in conjunction with the school, and I believe they have the youth-sized basketball courts.
As part of this conversation, we have a, we have a number of designated soccer fields. I don't know what this level of development of those fields is. Is the need for that many soccer fields versus adding one basketball court? I don't know what the balance is. Can you, can you address that?
We don't have enough soccer fields for the demand. If we were to build more soccer fields, there's two more proposed in this plan that have the ability to switch from ball to ball diamond to soccer field. If we were to build those out, they would be in full use.
And where are we with the demand on little league fields? Because I know those are pretty popular as well.
Unfortunately, it's maybe not as high of demand as we would like it to be. The one field is used, but it is a little bit neglected in terms, there's a lot of time that it is, the leagues are not playing on it.
Mr. Swedham?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Two questions. One regarding the sound of concern that we're just moving the problem. So have the neighbors on Lake Charo and Bearon Court, have they, are they aware that this is going to be moving closer to their homes?
We've had public meetings. It's over 350 feet from their homes, where the other was 150 feet. I cannot actually answer whether or not the individuals are fully aware of the meetings we have held.
So we didn't notice those streets specifically that we're anticipating moving this?
No.
Okay. And then it's similar questions from here from some of my colleagues. What is the process to get a different, you know, to change the master plan? Because I'm just thinking, there's this big surge in like pickleball. Let's say I want to put a pickleball court there, it's undeveloped. What's the process? How do we change the master plan?
The process would be to kind of meet with the user groups and discuss about their level of interest and support of the facility, and then taking that forward to the Board of Services, and with their recommendation, bringing it forward to this body for the change in the actual master plan.
So I guess then maybe, could you explain how we came up with this current design for the original master plan?
Absolutely. We, we looked at several sites. I can use this plan here. For the dog park, we looked at about four different sites. We looked at this area, I'm not sure if my mouse is showing up, but we're looking at an area that was volleyball courts at the west, the field, six soccer field. We looked at the location that is currently being proposed for the RC car track. We looked at the, here, we had a set of criteria that were gleaned mostly from the participants of the dog park. Shade was a concern. Potable water was a concern, and having a similar-sized area that they could throw a ball and allow their dogs to run a distance that would be adequate size. One of our largest constraints at this facility is actually potable water. There is potable water close to the current dog park in this back area. It's a pump house that has potable water, and we were able to bring a line through the dirt into the dog park. If we were looking at the -- If we were looking at the location where the volleyball courts are, we would have to tunnel under the road to bring in a potable line. If we were looking at either where the RC car track is located, or the skateboard, we were looking at cutting into the road, cutting into a main line, and bringing in a potable line source, which was just really unaffordable. This location next to the concession stands, there's actually a stubout right at the corner for potable water, so it's a very minimal effort. Plus, we had mature trees at the site along the west, or maturing trees, I should say, that do provide shade for the west summer sun, or the afternoon sunlight. So the users were very concerned about access to having potable water and shade. So that, we had a set of criteria that we evaluated each site. We shared this information with the Board of Community Services, and I think it was a community and joint, you know, decision to recommend this location.
Ms. Grant, how many meetings of the Board of Community Services was this issue discussed?
Two. In January and April.
Would you say that there was a good turnout? Maybe estimate the turnout of neighbors and users of these facilities?
I would estimate there was probably 30 to 40 dog park users, and there was about half a dozen of the residents from the neighbors across the creek.
And I'm just curious, I don't have any cards on this, but are there any neighbors or users here tonight?
I do believe some letters had been sent.
Yes, we did receive some correspondence. Any other questions?
Just regarding the Board of Community Services, so was it a unanimous recommendation that they moved forward with this, which you presented tonight?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Correction, it was a 6-1 vote.
I'm interested in what, what kind of discussion transpired with that, what kind of concerns that they raised during this discussion. They discussed it, it sounds like a two-meeting, so what kind of issues were raised, and what was some of that discussion about?
At the early meeting in January, we only brought forward one option, and that option, they wanted to see more options, other choices. So that's where we did a little more homework, brought together, you know, the pros and cons of three other sites to have, you know, lots more to look at. And I think for the most part, the dog park constituent that was there was very concerned about potable water. The residents are obviously concerned about their, you know, quality of life in their homes, in their home, the value of their homes, and being able to enjoy their property.
More questions?
But, but just to reemphasize, the neighbors south of the park, which were 300, which are 300 feet away from the proposed dog park there, they weren't noticed, and we haven't really gotten an opinion from that neighborhood. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the folks over on Baron and Valley West Court, because it is pretty close, and we're talking about dogs and noise travel, they weren't, I know we didn't have to contact them, but it's still pretty close, and I'm just kind of uneasy about making a decision tonight on that without having them notified or having some input in it.
I agree with that assessment. Particularly, there's what appear to be, at least on the map I'm looking at, three buildings existing that are sort of tucked into the master plan near where the children's play area and the footbridge are. Just the idea that none of those people were noticed. I thought we noticed when we did a change within 400 or 500. So are these out of that zone?
I'm going to try to speak to that, and that's Michael Recreation and Parks. Typically, on these master plan amendments, we have not followed like a planning and zoning type of protocol. So it is not something that's typical on the master plan creation.
Well, I mean, and I think also in addition, what you're encountering are two things that appeared on a, I mean, part of the challenge here is two things appeared. They are not master plan items. So a dog park grew out of some organic statement, and this is the sort of, and then we also have a track that grew out of some kind of organic creation. You know, I think staff can go back, if there's a feeling to do notice, we can change the process here. I think there's been a great deal of concern from the neighbors who are within the 150. I know the mayor met with Nanette and a couple of those stakeholders, and they were very, very, very vocal, and they've sent some letters in about the challenges they're facing when the dog park ends up within 150 feet. And so I think, you know, again, we're willing to go back and do additional notice if that's what, what the council desires. The challenge, though, I just want to fundamentally say is that we've inherited a situation that isn't the best situation, because now there's expectations of behavior that have been layered over a master plan. And this is creating a real challenge, and some of these conversations are, we now have expectation on top of a master plan.
I really hear that we need to relocate this, and this is probably the best place. What I'm wanting to avoid is moving it and then having a group of households say, but you didn't even notice us. And it seems to me that in the interest of open government, we should be, when we're making changes like this, noticing people who live adjacent to the park, using the planning processes. And I'm trying to figure out why we don't, I understand we haven't historically, but why we, I would like, I would like to move forward feeling, the neighbors within 150 feet were probably not noticed either, because the park grew organically. So when we, but when we consciously make a decision, we should have noticed.
And again, and again, I think that that can be the instruction from the group, that where the expectation lies, and we as staff will, will take that expectation and figure out how to move forward in the conversation. I will say, there will be some mightily unhappy folks within the 150, but I understand the direction if that's the direction given.
Do we need to put that into motion?
Yes, please.
Mr. Oliveras?
I think the, I think the concern was expressed, I mean, for me, I mean, we're talking about a master plan amendment is the title of this, so for me, it just sounds big, like people need to know that this is happening to their park, and recognizing that there are smaller elements that are being changed. But just looking at that, at that corner there where those residents are, I don't know, they may be the ones that showed up and said, we want the dog park moved, I don't know. I mean, it could be, they probably use it because they're neighbors of the park. But I just want to have some certainty and assurance that they, that they had some input in this, in this change.
And so if the council could clarify whether you're asking that direct notice be sent to residents within a certain area, or just the publishing of a public hearing notice like we do at many of our other public hearings?
So my interest would be those on the, I guess that'd be the southeast part of the park, because there's no structures there. So I'm hesitant to say this is the footmark. I, again, look at this as, do we have to do it? No, but if we're moving it because of noise, how far does noise from a dog park travel? I'm not a subject matter expert in there, and I would love to talk with the neighbors, because if they have no concerns and we get no concerns, we're good with that. But if there are some concerns, there may be some ways we can mitigate that sound before we approve it without even checking with them.
Well, I think what I would like to get some instruction is to keep us in a consistent working framework, so staff understands the obligation. Again, if, if the instruction is to follow whatever we would do in a normal planning process, I think that that would help us define limits in this conversation, and then we could sort of map out where, what that means. I'm all, I mean, you've heard me from day one say, I'm all about alignment and understanding what the expectation is. This is a misaligned conversation from the beginning, because there should have been master plan amendments, whatever that means, when some fundamental changes took place to the park. So we all understand that, and it's about getting in alignment. And again, if you were to direct that, my only urging would be to get us into a consistent conversation and establish a consistent expectation. And so that would be my urging, is the council consider directing staff to go back and apply the, our, our planning litmus tests to this type of conversation moving forward.
We're talking about a change in land use, so that's 500 feet, right? The notice that we usually require? Somebody want to make a motion?
I would make that motion if Mr. Oliveras doesn't want to make it first.
There's one other issue. How did the remote car area, is that organic too? Because that's not on the master plan either.
Correct. I mean, we're predating both Sean and myself just a little bit, but in, in the past, user groups would come forward, they'd bring their volunteer effort, and decisions were made with actually going through the formal process of bringing forward an amendment. So we're trying, trying to, trying to rectify that.
Right, or Piner?
I mean, this is, this is a major facility. It's not just the neighborhood park, it's really, I think it was intended for the city to use, you know, the soccer fields, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it just concerns me, and I think, I mean, I am okay with applying that rule, but, you know, my concern was with the Baron Court residents and the Valley West Court, but I think the direction you're heading with the 500 feet that we're talking about?
Yes.
Applying the same rule would cover that. It may be broader than what I was expecting, but it covers it.
I think we should be applying the planning process to significant changes in the master plan.
So that process would include publishing a public notice in the newspaper as well as a sign on the site, and mailing to the residents within 500 feet?
Seems fine to me. I was just going to throw out there since, okay, I'm sorry. We all can read the subtext of decisions were made. Moving forward, though, I think, and I'm sure you will do this, I would hope some discretion is exercised with respect to what activities are approved for organic, non-conforming use. I, I'm glad we're doing this, you know, hey, maybe there's a huge cult following of RC research out there, I don't know. But we're basically codifying, you know, any legal use, and I can appreciate that. But I'd really like to not have these conversations too often.
Well, there's always discovery in a process. I can't say why these decisions were made. As Nanette pointed out, this predates us. We're always going to have urging. I think the pathway is there's a master plan for a reason, if there's going to be an amendment to the master plan, if there's going to be an amended use, we want to bring it forward through the process that has been established.
Thank you. And, and believe me, I'm not saying, not suggesting either of you approve this, I just, as we move forward, you know, go through that Board of Community Services.
Well, if I may, the process always included the Board of Community Services in the past, and that's where it stopped. And technically speaking, they're an advisory group to the council. So we have years and years of omitting that next crucial step, which is to come before the council to get approval.
Is the, is the motion clear enough?
Yes, we just need a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who made the, did Ernesta make the motion, and I made the second, or?
You made the motion.
I made the motion, you want to make this, I'm sorry.
What's the, can you restate it, please, just so we all?
The motion was to utilize the same noticing requirement as we would for any zoning change, or land use change.
Land use change, yeah. And I want to say that I appreciate that our Parks Department is open and flexible with the needs of our community, that when people come in and they find a novel and interesting use, that we embrace them. If there's a way we can do that and still notice neighbors, that's a wonderful marriage.
Well, I don't think this is, again, fundamentally, it's not a question of what, of these particular usages, it's the process that was, that was gone through, as Nanette just pointed out. We may have more discovery on other areas where the process didn't go through the proper procedures to get in front of council to amend the master plan to allow this particular usage. Things change over a period of time. I don't think, you haven't heard any staff dispute about the usage. In fact, they said they're really good in some locations. I think what we've come down fundamentally to is a question of that it didn't go through all of the proper channels, and now it's come back to you with that omission as the, as the very first part of the conversation. So now we're having conversations about particular types of assets where that conversation should have taken place prior to this meeting.
Any further discussion? Your votes, please. That has six eyes.
May I just ask a, I'm sorry, quick question? Is there a way to do this so that we are not continuing the discomfort of the neighbors that are currently discomforted? What's the timeframe that we're talking about?
We'll caucus on that and see if we have any options on that front. But I've got to say, you know, that that may present its own series of challenges. But, but we will, we will try to address the concerns as best we can.
Thank you.
Shall we continue? Does anybody need a break? Sounds like we're continuing.
Item 13, 13.4, Report Adoption of a Resolution of Intention to Approve an Amendment to the City of Santa Rosa's Contract with the California Public Employees Retirement System and Introduce an Ordinance to Amend the Contract. Paul Carroll, Employee Relations Manager, presenting.
Never does what I want it to do. I know you almost had it. You were right there. That close? Oh, okay.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, we're here before you with the adoption of the resolution. And it's basically the implementation of the additional pension cost sharing, and it's consisted with council goals and addresses one of the 10 options put forth by the Pension Reform Task Force a number of years ago, which was increased employee contribution. It's also a basic formality we have to go through to even do it. We have to have a first rereading of the ordinance, and then a second reading three weeks later. And once we do the first reading, then we move ahead with an election that the employees partake in, and then we can move ahead with the process. The City of Santa Rosa has engaged in ongoing pension reform discussions since way back in 2006 and '07. The, in July of 2012, we established a second-tier retirement, and then we had PAPRA, which went into effect January 1st of 2013. That was the Public Employees Pension Reform Act. In 2014, council approved contracts that included pension cost-sharing agreements for all of the city's bargaining units. There we go, okay. Public employees, retirement law, and CalPERS have mandated contract amendment procedures. And one of them is a resolution of intention must be adopted prior to the first reading of the ordinance. So your action today is to approve the resolution of intention, and then do the first reading of the ordinance. The final adoption of the ordinance must be a minimum of 20 days from its introduction and is scheduled for June 30th, 2015. No cost sharing, no costs are associated with the implementation of the employee cost sharing, although there is a great deal of staff time to bring that about. So it is recommended by the Human Resources Department. So, it is recommended by the Human Resources Department that the council adopt the resolution of intention amending the contract between the City of Santa Rosa and the California Public Employees Retirement System and introduce the ordinance to amend the contract. Any questions?
Just to make sure that we're clear on this, this is basically codifying the agreements that the city has made with our bargaining units to share the cost of their pensions.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Oliveras?
Thank you. I'll move a resolution of intention to approve an amendment to contract between the Board of Administration, California Public Employees Retirement System, and the City Council of the City of Santa Rosa, and wait further reading of the text.
That has six eyes.
And I'll introduce an ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Rosa authorizing an amendment to the contract between the council of the City of Santa Rosa and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, and wait further reading of the text.
Second. Six eyes.
Item 13.5, Report: Professional Services Agreement Approval: Construction Management for Stony Point Road Widening and Reconstruction, Phase II. Sebastopol Road to Hearn Avenue Continued from May 19th, 2015, Regular City Council Meeting. Clay Thistle, Associate Civil Engineer, presenting.
Tonight, I would like to present to you item 13.5, Professional Service Agreement Approval: Construction Management for Stony Point Road Widening, Reconstruction, Phase II, Sebastopol Road to Hearn Avenue. As you've heard previously, the Stony Point Road widening project will reconstruct Stony Point Road by adding travel lanes in both directions, in addition to a new traffic signal at Lozini Avenue and two pedestrian crossings. Additionally, sidewalk and bike lanes will be added where they do not currently exist. At the last council meeting on May 19th, by resolution, the council awarded the project construction contract to Bay Cities Paving and Grading of Concord in the amount of approximately $10 million. The project is scheduled to begin as soon as this month. Requests for proposal, construction management services for the project were distributed to seven consultants. Four proposals were received. A review board consisting of four city staff members and one council member reviewed and scored the proposals. Interviews were conducted with the top two proposing firms. Upon completion of the interviews, the review board conferred and made recommendation for the selection of Harris and Associates. Consultant proposals were solicited due to a staff does not typically administer construction contracts of this size, and doing so would impact or elude potential delivery of other projects. Harris and Associates has successfully managed construction projects for the city in the past. In addition to routine construction management services, the scope of work proposed with the Harris contract includes public relations, construction staking, environmental compliance and biological monitoring, as-needed arborist and archaeological services, and hazardous materials monitoring. It is recommended that council by motion approve the professional services agreement for construction management of Stony Point Road with Harris and Associates. If there was any questions?
No questions. Very good. Ms. Carlstrom?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the professional services agreement for construction management services for the Stony Point Road widening and reconstruction, Phase II, Sebastopol Road to Hearn Avenue project, in an amount not to exceed $1,864,726.16 with Harris and Associates, Inc. of Concord, California, and wait further reading.
Second. Six eyes.
Item 14.1, Public Hearing: Zoning Code Text Amendment Extended Hours of Operation. Susie Murray, City Planner, presenting.
The project before you this evening is a zoning code text amendment, and it is pertaining to the extended hours of operation. The zoning code text amendment will, it's intended to change some land use title, align some definitions, and will add the land use to several zoning districts. We received an application for a zoning code text amendment back in May of 2014. And the original request was to add the extended hours of operation into the light industrial zoning district for a sports facility. In June, we sent all that proposal out to city departments, other outside agencies, homeowner associations, and interested groups. And we did receive a couple of comments, which I'll address later in my presentation. In January, or during the review process, staff decided to broaden the scope of the project and include other zoning districts and take the opportunity to clean up some of the definitions of the zoning code. Back in March, March 26th, the Planning Commission reviewed the text amendment and adopted a resolution approval to the council. The definitions that will be revised as a result of this amendment include the extended hours of, well, right now, they read extended hours retail, and it'll be modified to extended hours of operation. The definition itself is pretty specific, that it applies to businesses that are open to the public during the hours between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. These are, you know, service providing businesses. Where we were taking advantage to align the definitions is with the definitions of hours of operation, where extended business hours currently reads between 8 and, or I'm sorry, 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and we're changing it to 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. This is the first, or first two tables of five that will be affected, and this is for the residential and commercial zoning districts. The only change that took place in these two tables is moving the land use from underneath the retail trade heading and moving it down to the services general heading. There is no change in the level of discretionary review for any of these districts. This use already exists there. The next three tables show the use being added in the business park, light industrial, general industrial, and public institutional zoning districts, and the light, limited light industrial combining district. In all cases, it would require a minor, minor conditional use permit here. I have to quote CEQA. So, the California Environmental Quality Act states that the project is exempt if the activity is covered by the general rule that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. This project, this text amendment, is exempt. Currently, the use is allowed in the commercial districts, and there is only one district where it's permitted by right without discretionary review, and that's the downtown commercial. That's already been reviewed. All the other districts where it's being added, it does require discretionary review, minor use permit, and at that point, we would review any environmental impacts. So, the inquiries that, or the questions that we were asked, the first one was what type of business would be permitted? And specifically, it was worried about, it was addressing industrial uses being allowed to operate through the night. This land use is not applicable to that type of use. It is only applicable to commercial uses that are providing service to the public. The fire department raised a question about emergency access requirements for businesses, again, that were open in the night. And again, all of those, the uses would come in on conditional use permits and would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. A couple of days ago, I received a call from a citizen that was concerned about adding extended hours in the commercial districts, and I explained that it's already there. In that case, we're just changing the location on the land use tables. So, with that, that is recommended by the Planning Commission and the Department of Community Development that the city council introduce by ordinance, or an ordinance, for the proposed zoning code text amendment related to extended hours of operation. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant who wants to make any presentation?
The applicant representative is here, but I don't think they're planning on making...
I don't have an official presentation. How many questions?
Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff or the applicant? Yes, Ms. Combs.
Can you clarify some of the basic planning documents that we've gotten? The first question I have is, was the Planning Commission vote unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you. Does a minor use permit, does that happen over the counter?
No, it's a lower level of discretionary review. It's reviewed by the zoning administrator. That's a one-person review body. It requires a public meeting and public noticing.
So, there is a notice to neighbors?
There is a notice to the neighbors, yes, to property owners within 400 feet of the parcel.
And I'm just looking at, on the document we have, it says page 7 of 13, residential use, animal keeping? Are we adding that, or has that always been there?
I'm not quite sure what, let me grab my...
Okay. I just know we've had some questions just now about dogs barking, so I thought I'd better ask if it's a minor use permit for dogs to bark in your neighborhood.
No, that's, yeah, that's not the kind of service that we're talking about. It's, you know, more like retail or recreation, a sports facility, or, yeah. I think that's a copy of, that's a copy of the text, the table that's being amended. Okay, so, yeah, and we had to include the entire table.
It might be helpful if you would highlight the ones that are specifically being changed.
It was originally done in red, what's being changed, and I apologize if it got copied in black and white. That would explain why you don't see it.
We didn't get red, so I'm not sure which ones.
I can, I can go back if you'd like, and that will, but these are the land use tables affected, and these are the only changes. So, here, what you're seeing is the residential zoning district. We're crossing it out under retail trade and just reapplying it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. If you'd like to address the council on this issue, you don't have to fill out a card.
You could open the public hearing. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'm going to open the public hearing. And seeing no one rise, I will close the public hearing. Who's got this?
I do.
Ms. Combs?
I'll read it. Ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Rosa amending Title 20 of the Santa Rosa City Code, Section 20-70.020 definitions, and Land Use Tables 2-2, Section 20-22.030, 2-6, Section 20-23.030, 2-10, Section 20-24.030, 2-12, Section 2-26.030, and 2-20, Section 20-28.070, to change sections relating to the extended hours of operation, land use file number REZ14-007, and wait further reading of the text.
Second. Any further discussion? Your votes, please. We have six eyes. Some written communications?
Written communications, just two items under written communications. Item 15.1, Quarterly Capital Improvement Program Projects Update, January to March 2015, provided for information. Item 15.2, Letter of Support, Extend Deadline of State Funding for the Building Equity and Growth in Neighborhoods Begin Program for Catalina Townhomes, provided for information.
Do you have any update on that situation?
That situation is moving ahead, and we're very, very, in very good stead. I'll get a formal update out to the council tomorrow, but it's been a critical, I just have to commend our internal team in housing, in the housing group, and also the hard work that our lobbyist team did on the ground in Sacramento. In addition, our state representatives from the area all have rallied around this particular cause, and we've actually helped other communities through the initiative to get to a very, very good place. So, Santa Rosa should be proud of its team, and actually, the market made on the entire state under this particular endeavor.
Excellent. We are proud. I have no cards. Is there anyone wishing to make final public comment? Not seeing anyone interested, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Did you close, people?
Yes.